...meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And Leckman Leckowitz, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item is to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of January 6th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I motion to approve the minutes of January 6th.
And I will second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion carries. And I just want to start off by saying before we begin the meeting, I'd like to just note that although the charter only requires 24 hours notice of information, we got to pack it out on Friday, I realize it's a lot of information for the selectmen to review, especially this because we had a lot of different items. And I just want to apologize because I know I'm a new administration and, you know, it's a lot of work for me to sort of get this all together, being new, and I do appreciate your patience, and I'm going to work really hard to make sure you get it sooner.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate that, and thank you for the recognition of that. Appreciate it.
So our next item is reappointments to hear and consider an act upon the following reappointment to the Shellfish Commission. Timothy Macklin, unaffiliated, 41 Belle Air Lane, for a term from 11/19 to 11/23. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve the reappointment of Timothy Macklin.
And I will second. Mr. Macklin is not able to attend his meeting today due to a work commitment. Any discussion from the board? Does anyone from the public wish to speak? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Appointments, number five, next item, to hear and consider an act upon the following appointment of the Board of Health. Mark J. Hotchkiss of 640 Rolling Hills Drive, term from 11/19 to 11/23, to fill a vacancy for Denise Walsh, whose term expired. May I have a motion to approve?
And I will move to approve Mark J. Hotchkiss to the Board of Health.
And I will second. And is Dr. Hotchkiss here today? Oh, hi, Dr. Hotchkiss. Thank you for coming and for your willingness to serve our community.
And I would like to add a comment if I may.
Absolutely.
During the process of talking to potential candidates for boards and commissions, it's a great pleasure we get to go out and meet people at the community, and to have such an engaged citizenry is really inspiring. This is a particularly meaningful appointment. I rarely have met someone with such integrity, who is so thoughtful, who really wants the best for Fairfield professionally. This is, Mark Hotchkiss is an incredible candidate. We're so lucky to have you, Mark, serving on our Board of Health, and I just want to say thank you for serving. So this is a great privilege for me today to be able to nominate and support this appointment.
Very nice. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Congratulations, and thank you. Thank you very much. Next to hear and consider an act upon the following appointment, the Fair TV Commission, Alexander Vishnu of 61 Hemlock Hills North, term 11/19 to 11/22, to fill a vacancy for Kathryn Braun, who was elected to serve on the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve Alexander Vishnu to serve on the Fair TV Commission.
And I will second. And Mr. Vishnu is here today? And is there any discussion from the board?
Just to say how great it was to talk to you. You're a really qualified candidate. Film and television is my other day job, so it was great to hear and chat with you about this commission, and you are certainly well-qualified, so welcome. It's great to have you.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it. It was great to talk with you as well, and I hope to meet more of our kind soon.
Well, I have a personal relationship with Alex. He actually works out with me at a CrossFit gym, and that's how I lassoed him into doing this work, because he is in video business and he has a lot of experience in this avenue, so I think he's going to be an awesome fit for Fair TV and going to bring a lot of good information and ideas going forward. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve with the community.
Thank you. I'm honored.
All right. Back to the board. Anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing none? Does anyone? Back to the board. All in favor?
Yes. Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, and thank you. Next, to consider an act upon the filing appointment to the Parking Authority, Daniel C. Ford of Valley Road, to fill a term from 11/19 to 11/24, filling a vacancy for Elise V. McKay, whose term expired. May I have a motion to approve?
I will motion to approve.
I will second. Is Mr. Ford here today? No. Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, any from the public? Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Item D, to hear and consider an act upon the following appointment to the Police and Fire Retirement Board. This is an item that we are going to move to future meeting. There are some things that have to be worked out, so the Pension Board wants to have a little bit more time.
Do we need to table it to a date certain?
Does it need to be a date certain? Okay, so let's move it to...
Yeah.
Just to the next meeting? Motion to, can I motion to move it to the next meeting?
Okay, I'll move, I motion to move the Police and Fire Retirement Board appointment to the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E is to hear and consider an act upon the following appointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority, Gerald F. Alessi of 582 Shrub Oak Lane, term from 11/18 to 11/22, to fill a vacancy for Robert Sinta, who was appointed to the Fire Commission. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve Gerald Alessi to the Water Pollution Control Authority Commission.
And I will second. And is Mr. Alessi here today? Do we have any discussion from board members?
Just that I'm looking forward to serving you, serving with you on the Water Pollution Control Authority. It's a good time.
And I'm very excited to have Mr. Alessi serving on this important board, and I think he's going to make it very lively, and is going to make sure that the public is well-informed about everything happening on the Water Pollution Control Authority. And Nancy, I think you're going to really enjoy serving with Mr. Alessi. Absolutely. So I have, is there a member, any members from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you very much. Mr. Alessi has served for a long period of time in various boards for the community, and we're looking forward to having you back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Item F, to hear and consider an act upon the filing appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate, Brian A. Avalone of 442 Zoest Drive, term 11/17 to 11/21, to fill a vacancy for Jane Gitlin-Nishball, who was elected as a full member on 11/5/19. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve Brian Avalone to the Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate.
I will second. And Mr. Avalone unfortunately cannot attend. His son was in the emergency room last night, so I hope that he is okay. And so I'll bring it back, well, open up to the public. Is there any public comment on this item? Back to the board.
Just to say that Brian is going to be a great advocate for Fairfield. He's a nice guy, a great guy, dedicated, and I'm proud to be able to support his appointment here today.
Awesome. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And item six is for information purposes only. I am pleased to announce that I have appointed former Selectman Chris Timniak as Town Treasurer for the town of Fairfield, for the term of 11/19 to 11/23. This is a first select woman appointment, so it doesn't require a vote from the Board of Selectmen. I'm very excited that Chris agreed to step up and serve as the Town Treasurer. And is there any comments? Would you like to say anything?
No, I would thank you very much. I look forward to continuing to serve the town of Fairfield.
Any comments from the board?
I think it bodes well that you didn't run in the other direction, and you still want to stick around for more, so glad to have you and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Chris. Really appreciate you stepping up. And do I... Nancy was reminding me that I'm doing this now. I've only had, this is our third meeting?
Yeah.
So I say to everyone who's here that has been appointed that you don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting, because sometimes it's a little dry and you might want to just skedaddle out now.
Get out while you can.
Get out while you can. Thank you, guys.
Sorry.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Chris is a glutton for punishment. Okay. So we're going to be taking a couple items out of order due to the Board of Administration needing ample time to prepare for their Board of Education meeting tonight. I make a motion to move the item 13 up on the agenda to be taken up before item seven, nonrecurring capital. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, item 13, to hear and consider capital project requests from Fairfield Ward, for Fairfield Ward High School, Osborne Hill Elementary School, and we are going to be, are we officially taking the third item off? Yes. Okay, so on the agenda, it does say Walter Fitzgerald Campus, but that item is going to be temporarily removed for now. So I'm going to ask, there he is.
Maybe just table, you have to make an official motion.
I don't know why to table it that way.
We're going to ask that you take no action on it at this time.
Okay.
So Angeles Pop, Church Director of Operations, Fairfield Public Schools. Before you, you have a book that we put together for our capital projects. As you said, there's three in there, but we're only asking you guys to consider two of them. The first one being the Osborne Hill Roof, which we've had many problems with over the last few years with water getting into the building. So we are asking for capital request of, my page here. 1.409046, as a capital project, replace the Osborne Hill Roof. There's been some issues with the roof. It was originally installed in... It was originally installed as a new roof in 1991, and then in 2012, a roof project extension went on to extend the warranty. Unfortunately, within the warranty time that is still current, we've had some major issues with it. We are pursuing other avenues for reimbursement from the warranty company. However, at this time, in order to make the building safe and secure for the students as a healthy building, we had to do a temporary repair last summer, and now we are looking for this summer to get the capital request so that we can move ahead with replacing the entire roof. This roof will, there's a full breakdown as to what the roof will do in the book in front of you. It will update the R value of the insulation as well as replacing the roof and allowing us to also move forwards with possibly pursuing a solar system on top of the roof at Osborne Hill.
Right.
So that's the Osborne Hill Roof, if you have any questions on that one.
So just, I've been meeting over the last two weeks with departments and talking about their capital projects and their budgets and such, and we met today, actually, to discuss these items earlier today, so would you like to ask any questions?
No, it just sounds like doing nothing really is not an option for the health and safety, and I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Correct.
So just for the public's edification, the roof is within its warranty period, and the school district has been trying to work with them to fix this, and there's been some back and forth on it. In the meantime, we have a problem with the roof, so we need to move forward and hope we will be compensated.
That is our hope.
Based on our discussions.
At this point, we have no choice but to move forwards with a roof replacement. This is a, it would be considered a full roof replacement, so the state would do a reimbursement. We're moving forwards with requesting reimbursement for a roof job at Osborne Hill School, but to do nothing at this point would be a safety concern and health and safety for the students in the building and the staff.
And with this new roof, is it possible that there'll be other added benefits like efficiency in terms of energy?
Energy efficient, that's the R value for the roofing insulation will be increased to meet the new code, so it will give us a tighter building and better energy efficient all around.
And thereby savings, you could argue.
Savings, heating savings, you could argue, yes. So that's our first Osborne Hill. The second one you'll see in the same booklet that's labeled "Capital" is the Fairfield Ward High School Air Conditioning Project you'll see in there. This is a project that has been brought up a few times, so we're requesting 1.5 million as a capital project to add air conditioning to the cafeteria area at Fairfield Ward High School. This will help equalize the two high schools. Ledlow High School already has an air-conditioned cafeteria, and increase the ability to have summer meetings in that area to allow the staff and town to use it during hotter days. It would also increase our ability to offer it to the town for emergency town meetings in the summer, that type of stuff, where the weather might cause a issue, and Ledlow High School would not be available. For whatever reason, it gives us an alternative location for town meetings as well as district-wide meetings. The 1.5 million that we're requesting was worked out with an architect engineer that we've used in the past to come up with numbers and best solutions to figure out the best way to air condition it. It is a unique situation with a low ceiling and then a curved ceiling in the front area, so there's some obstacles to overcome, but they feel comfortable that by carrying that number, it would help us and alleviate any problems that are unforeseen.
And the life expectancy of this? I know it's in here somewhere, I'm just...
Yep. I don't want to misquote it.
Sorry, I was looking for it also. I just wanted...
I want to say 20 years, but I didn't want to miss it. 20 years. On the page five.
It says to here, environmental considerations, that all equipment will meet all regulatory standards.
Correct.
Anytime putting something new, we have an opportunity to really do what's the most sustainable, the most environmentally...
Yep, everything will be the most updated equipment available on the market. This project does not include the upgrade of the controls system currently in the building. However, that is part of the long-term facility plan that we're working to improve on, which will give us a better control system in the building and better energy efficiency in the building.
So can, but just explain what that means, sorry.
So the computerized control system that controls the heat in the building now and the air conditioning in the Fitzhouse hallways, this new system will be tied into that existing system, so we'll have control over it. But down the road, we are looking to improve the controls throughout the entire, all the buildings in the district to make them more energy efficient.
So you can turn them off and turn them on.
Turn them on and regulate temperatures better. Any questions? Those are the two capital. Like I said, the third one would be the Walter Fitzgerald site, but we're asking that you take no action at this time on that one.
All right, do you want to elaborate a little bit for the public on that?
We can just say that we are...
The chairman of the board maybe would like to? Thank you, Kristin.
Kristina Metalla, Chair of the Fairfield Board of Education. Thank you for tabling this for today. We are still very much committed to this project. Just some new information has come to our attention over the last week or so since the Board of Education approved this project. Town officials are also touring St. Emory's, so we just felt to do our due diligence, it'd be good to pause, not rush this forward for this board, to give you both the opportunity and Mr. Flynn the opportunity to tour the building. But I don't want you to think the fact that we've asked you not to take action to be any way an indication of a lack of commitment towards moving this project forward. We currently are leasing space at St. Emory's for our alternative high school program, and that lease is up July 1st, so this is a priority for the board to find a long-term home for these students and for this program. I'm happy to take any questions on that, but I just wanted to give a little more clarification as to why it's not before you right now.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you, and I look forward to supporting the efforts here. I'm just glad that you are asking us not to take action today, because I know that both the first select woman and I have it on the schedule to tour, I think, next week, so it's great to be able to have the opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I mean, and I have been in the building a lot, just to spend time with the students over the last several years, speaking to them and spending time with them when I was in my capacity as a state representative. But I know you're also kind of looking around at other locations, and I think the public should be aware that you're looking, it's not just because we haven't toured it, but they also are looking at several options.
Over the left, yes. We want to make sure that when we bring this before you and before the other town bodies, hopefully if you approve it, that we can say, we looked here, we looked here, there were a variety of options, and this is where we landed.
Perfect.
And since the Board of Education voted, there's been some new information, which is why we're asking you to pause. But thank you for putting on the agenda today, because, no, if this information did not come to bear in the last week, we would have been asking you to move forward with it.
Thank you very much. All right. Do you have any further questions on those?
I think it is worth noting, though, that these are items that have been, it's not new information, it's not just coming to us, it's something that's been planned and...
Correct. They've been on the waterfall chart.
Exactly, so.
So I'm trying to remember now, are we going to be, is this supposed to be a presentation or are we voting on this?
On the two items.
On the two items. All right, so then I'm going to open up to the public for any comments on the two capital items from the Education Administration, the Osborne Hill Roof and the Andrew Ward Air Conditioning. All right, back to the board.
Yep.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. So our next, we're going to be going, taking the, go back. The non, item number seven, non-recurring capital, town items. Make a motion to hear and consider the non-recurring capital list. Can I get a motion?
I will move to hear the non-recurring capital requests.
I second. So I will ask, just for some, to allow the Director of Parks and Rec to come up and talk about his item, because he also has a meeting this evening that he needs to attend. Anthony Calabrese. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Anthony Calabrese, Director of Parks and Recreation. I appreciate you guys taking me first, as I do have another meeting to get to. I'll start with the Tomlinson Middle School Tennis Court Replacement.
Yes.
We're looking to do a $400,000 replacement of the tennis courts that are there. Currently, we've got what you would call asphalt tennis courts. They were installed back in, I believe, 2005, 2006. They are beyond their life expectancy. We've been resurfacing and repainting them every other year to the tune of between $45,000 and $60,000. So at this point, it is either time to ground them up and redo them as asphalt, or potentially what I'm proposing here is to do them as post-tension concrete. Post-tension concrete has a warranty of 20 years against cracking and 10 years on all line, all the lines on them. For those of you who might not know, we did just do post-tension concrete at the James Blake's Courts at Fairfield Ward, and we did the ones at Ledlow High School last summer. Board of Ed did both of those projects, and both went smooth. So looking for pretty much maintenance-free tennis courts for the next 20 years at these two, at this one location with Tomlinson. Take any questions you guys have, pretty straightforward request.
This includes all the removal and the material?
Yeah, the $400,000 includes all the removal of the current tennis courts, the site work that's there, fencing, tree removal, and, you know, obviously the painting of the new court. So we plan to do this in the summer, when after school's at a session, and try to have the least disruption with the public as possible.
And the discarding of the materials safely and...
Yep, contractor handles all of that, yes.
Good to note.
Yep.
And again, this is something that you've brought before various bodies and...
Correct. This has been on the waterfall chart. Yeah, one of these.
We have a long waterfall.
It's a very long waterfall.
We have to start working on that, getting stuff done.
Okay, if there's no other questions on that one, I'll move to the even easier one. Our H. Smith Richardson 10-Year Improvement Plan, this is the 10th and final year of our request for $100,000 to do upgrades at the course. As you guys have before you, you can see, really, it's just to try to refresh the course itself, cart paths, things of that nature, some T-boxes. Again, just, it is the 10th year of the plan. It is our 11th year, unfortunately. There was one year where they held, we, the money was withheld, but hopefully looking to finish that and get that course open again. I know you guys are hearing an update on later.
Yes, on the clubhouse.
Yeah.
So the course and the clubhouse can be commensurate with one another.
Exactly.
I don't have any. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I think we vote all of it together. That's a good question.
Do we vote?
Each item?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. This is all new to me, so I'm learning too. Okay, so instead of taking them all together, we're going to vote on each item, so then I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there any comments on the two items? The golf course and the tennis courts?
My name is Jim Gallagher. I live at 983 Congress Street here in Fairfield. I used to be a member of the Town Facilities Commission. When I was active in town, I was chairman. I was chairman for quite a while, and one of our real sticking point was warranties. The TFC was adamantly opposed to the warranties that are on the roofs that we're having a problem with now at the school, but that's, it's over and done. The only question, and I'm sure that Anthony has done his due diligence on it, my question I would have had with the TFC also is, I'm a big fan of post-tension concrete. I think it's a great idea, but a big selling point is the warranty on it, and I just want to make sure that the proximity to the railroad tracks is not going to have any impact on the warranty.
Proximity to the railroad tracks not having...
No, it won't.
No. Not shouldn't, it won't.
So just a housekeeping item here.
Is there any other comment on either one of these items? None? We're trying to decide if we're supposed to just hear and consider or if we're supposed to actually move these forward.
So I think the best way to do this is...
On each item separately?
Yes.
Because we're going to remove the...
Unless we just say all of them are considering, and then we table, and we just pick it up next time. Anthony's saying that normally we don't.
Chime in, Anthony. Sorry.
So past practices, you guys normally just hear and consider these tonight, and then you guys would vote at your next meeting?
Oh, okay.
That's normally how it's done. Not to say you couldn't do that.
Because I thought we sent them to the Board of Finance after this.
You can, but it's normally...
So we could technically make a motion to vote on this item separately, because if we are approving it, I mean, I guess it's not standard...
we are approving it, I mean, I guess it's not standard practice, but...
You can. You absolutely can do that.
Typically, we would keep all these. Okay.
Just normally...
We'll all live here.
Thanks, Anthony.
No problem with you voting.
I'm sure you don't.
Then technically, it's hear and consider for the Board of Ed that we voted on to and approved.
Right. All the ones that we have.
Should we retroactively make a motion, then, to vote on the Board of Ed?
Well, the Board of Ed was...
No, we did vote on this.
Yeah. I'm not voting on the long term.
Right.
But it said to hear and consider in the minutes.
In the agenda.
I mean, on the agenda.
On the agenda, it says, it didn't say to vote.
You have to move, right, on the town items to vote. You have to move that.
On the non-recurring town items.
And the Board of Ed, just to keep it...
No, because we said we were. Well, Chris, you were on this board before, tell us.
The agenda says to hear and consider.
I'm going to have a five-minute recess.
All right. People see the process.
All right. See? We're live.
Who knew how much fun this could be?
So I am going to ask that we hear, consider, and act upon number 16 and 17 of the, on the non-recurring capital project list. The Park and Rec Golf Course renovation and the post-tension tennis courts, Tomlinson. And we were in the middle of public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the one or more of these two items? Seeing none, back...
Should I move, should I second then?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll second.
So a motion to approve the golf course renovation, last phase, for $100,000, and the post-tension tennis courts at Tomlinson Middle School for $400,000, which would total $500,000 for the two items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So there's first a motion before us to add voting, which we're, to amend it, to amend the agenda, which I will, I'm moving, I'm seconding that.
Okay.
So there's approved to add, and now to make the motion.
Of these, for these two items, that total $500,000.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so those two items will be then moved to the Board of Finance for review. Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
You're free to go. Fly, Anthony.
Get out now.
Get out while you can. All right, I'm going to go back to the item number one, transfer station renovation and design in the amount of $250,000. Again, I'm going to amend the agenda to say this is a motion to hear and consider and act on this item. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, I will second that motion.
All right, you will second the motion. And who's here?
Good afternoon, Brian Carey, Conservation Director for the Town of Fairfield. So I'm here to address items 1, 3, 7, 8, and then 11, possibly 11, 12, 13, on the capital projects.
Sorry, 1, 3, 7, 8, and 13?
1, 3, 7, 8, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, so I am going to interrupt you briefly and tell you that we are going to make a motion after we are done with most of these items to move items 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 to our next Board of Selectmen meeting. So we have a choice of either taking each of these separately and allowing Brian to speak, open it up to public comment, come back and vote individually, or we can take them all, have Brian speak about them, and then let the public comment. Which would you prefer?
That we take them individually, because I think there are a few...
Okay, that's fine.
Questions about...
All right, so if you would just speak to the item number one right now, Brian?
Yes. So, transfer station structural improvements for $250,000. Anyone who's been to the transfer station recently understands the building. We took ownership of that building approximately 10 years ago from the Connecticut Resource Recovery Agency. That agency was disbanded about eight, 10 years ago. So there's been improvements that have been much needed to the building that the town inherited when we took it over 10 years ago. The idea behind the structural improvements that are needed, there's a couple of critical things that need to be addressed right away, including the outside overhead doors, some issues with the roofing. There's a myriad of things that could be basically addressed right away. But we want to put together a similar plan, capital plan, that can be funded year after year, over the course of five, three to five years, five to seven years, however much the report determines, where we'll bring in an architect to have them look at the whole facility and basically bring it up to code. So we envision, if you look at the costs, that that plan would run about $50,000. We already have gone out for, in our request for qualifications for architects, we can write a proposal in-house to get this moving pretty quickly. And the idea would be to take the other $200,000 that they were asking for and move quickly to fix some of those critical issues down at the transfer station. Most of the other towns' facilities do have somewhat of a capital plan. Board of Ed presented some of the items tonight out of a capital plan, the Fire Department has a capital plan. To do this and put together, you know, an outlook for the facility is something that we feel is prudent. And again, if you go down there, there's some, there's some things that need to be implemented immediately just for, to keep the facility working.
So at the end of, I understand the $50,000, at the end of the $200,000 spend, what...
We'll be coming back with another request next year based on whatever the facilities report will say. So we know that there's, I mean, I could go out there and spend 250 making repairs to that building right now, but I want to find out, you know, basically in three steps, like what is immediate need, what can be, you know, done a year or two from now, what is longer term that, you know, that we can basically tackle down the road.
So $250,000 basically is a full blueprint for what you will need to make sure.
That's correct.
And does that cover any of the immediate safety concerns?
Yes, so there's, so if you look at the budget breakdown, again, $50,000, we feel is probably a little bit high in the amount of money requested for a plan and bid specs, but the idea is to hire an architect immediately to go in there and basically look at the building from a code perspective and look at any, you know, roofing leaks, just basically whole facility assessment, and then come up with a plan that I can bring back in the future and say, you know, over the next, you know, whether three to five or five to seven years, this is, this is what we need to fund down at the transfer station and make it structurally sound and functional. Now, some of those, some of those, some of those repairs are the requirement of the onsite contractor right now, we're having those discussions.
Now, I'm sorry if I don't seem like I'm asking a lot of questions, but I meet with all the department heads during the weekend, and we, I ask a lot of questions and learn about a lot of this prior, so feel free, anything you have to ask.
Are we going to hear? Do you want to, this one should I move to?
Yeah, but I want to open it up to the public. If there's anyone who has any questions about this item, transfer station renovation design in the amount of $250,000, to be on our non-recurring capital project list.
I'm Dick Mahusky, I live on Colonial Drive, and I would just like to, first of all, thank you for adding and act to these items, because these things typically have taken forever and ever, so I'm glad to see a little alacrity brought into the process. I support Brian's plan for looking at things overall, setting a long-term plan, and then staying with it to both spread out the cost and to do it logically and in a calm approach manner. So I support this item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I would like to just follow up on that and say that just in the short time I've been in office, I've learned that we have, it appears that we have not taken care of a lot of things in our town. And so for whatever reason, there's a lot of backed-up things that need to be taken care of. We have 18 town buildings that require a lot of work and maintenance, and I'm learning a lot about them from our department heads and the men and women who work for our town. And so I'm going to work really hard to try to make sure that we do start focusing on our town buildings and our infrastructure and our technology, because our town needs to do those things. So I'm excited about doing these things, I'm hoping they make it through the process. So go to the other meetings. Okay. All right, so is there anyone else who has any questions on this, on this item?
I would just...
Back to the board, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. I would just add what I will keep adding, any considerations for the environment, I know that's your purview, so I just wanted to say for the record that that's something always that we should be considering, especially as we're bringing things up to speed, and there's no reason we shouldn't. And I know these things don't come cheap, but it's important, so...
It's always one of the tasks we have when we ask someone to look at a building is obviously energy efficiency, and Ed Bowman will strap a solar panel on anything that...
He will.
Don't walk away.
He will. You got to watch your own back, he might put one on you. All right. So do I, I'll make a motion to, to approve the transfer station renovation design in the amount of $250,000.
I think technically we have to amend, to act on it.
Well, I said it in the beginning, we're going to hear, consider, and act, when I made the original.
Okay, so we don't have to do it with each individual?
Yes. I did, I did say it in the beginning. That's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I just want to make sure we're...
Yep.
Okay, yes, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sir.
Motion carries, that's okay. All right, so that motion carries. Can I just stop a second? Did you have another item?
We have the non-recurring.
Okay, all right. Can I take them, can I, I'm going to make a motion to stop for a minute on the non-recurring and bring them back up, because I know they have a meeting. I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought, I did both, I apologize for that. So I'm going to go back to, to hear and consider, but not act, right? Mr. Bremer? On this capital project, so this is the second one you have.
Actually, you could act on it. You could act on this non-recurring.
I can act on this one.
Yeah, we would ask that you act on.
Okay.
You need to amend the agenda to say act on now.
Okay, so I'm going to make an amendment to the agenda to hear, consider, and act on the Fairfield Board of Education's proposed, proposed capital non-recurring projects.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. You're up.
Do you have to vote?
We didn't vote yet.
No, on the amendment.
Make a motion, we're making a motion.
On the amendment.
Oh, yes. Yes, all in favor of, aye. Okay. Thank you. Look at this, public's even helping me.
It takes a minute.
Don't worry, I'll get it sooner or later.
So before you, you have three non-recurring projects that we are hoping to move forwards tonight. The first one being the Fairfield Woods Middle School Elevator Replacement Project. This is a project that was actually approved last year and went out to bid last year, but funding was not available, so we've held it off. We've worked with the winning contractor of the bid, and he has agreed to hold pricing through this year so that we can move forwards with it as soon as it gets through the approval process. Again, we are grateful that you're going to approve tonight, because there is a, over a 14-week lead time for an elevator replacement, and we hope to have this in operation before September when the students come back to school. So that's the $175,000 elevator replacement you see in front of you. This is a two-story elevator that last year during a failure, we had staff members bringing children around the outside of the building and back in to get to the lower level of Woods Middle School. The replacement would be a full replacement of this project. The boards on the existing one elevator and the parts are not available. We actually had a last-minute elevator company came, come in, and were able to send the boards out to get them rebuilt so that they could work this school year and get us through. However, there's no guaranteeing, over this last school year, we've had them out probably once or twice a month to get this elevator working again. So we are basically holding it together with Band-Aids and tape at this point, so we hope that you would approve that project. The second project you see is the Roger Ludlow Middle School Cooling Tower. This is part of the air conditioning system within the building. It's, what it does is it takes the hot air, hot water out of the building, cools it down and brings it back into the building, it's a continuous cycle to cool the building. The contractors that we use to services have compared it to a sieve at this point. It's got more scrap metal and pieces welded and screwed onto it to hold the water inside, otherwise it continues to flood. I don't know, if you go down by Roger Ludlow Middle School in the back, you'll probably see it over the summer spilling water on the ground, which is all water that we have to make up for in the end. So we're asking for the $400,000 to replace these. We also were informed when we were looked into replacing these that part of the large problem with these are during the development of the school, there was evergreen trees planted around these towers to create a screen from the public for a visual perspective when they're entering the auditorium. The evergreen trees were being told the... The evergreen trees were being told the, the acidity in the sap is, could be causing part of the problem with the actual cooling towers. So part of this project will be to remove those evergreen trees and come up with some type of different screen, whether it's a higher fence or something that we can try to make it more pleasing without the trees, or even a different type of tree that might help and not create problems within the cooling towers. And the last project you see before you is the Fairfield High School, Fairfield Ledlow High School Generator. So this is the emergency generator for the high school and also the emergency generator for the shelter here in town. This generator has been problematic for the last couple of years now. We've been able to keep it running, however, once again, because of the age of the generator, parts are no longer readily available and it leads for a long lag time for the generator being down when we need it running. So that's why we've moved forwards with replacing this. All three of these projects you see do appear on our waterfall and our long-term facilities plan. So we're pushing all three of these forwards. We're asking for consideration for a total of $775,000 for three projects.
So I understand that the first select woman has met with you. I just do have a couple of questions. One comment, when you do remove trees, if there's a way to save them, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
Tree ward would be happy to take them somewhere.
Yep. We actually have a preserve kinda in the back that we may be able to replant them in away from the building.
Great. And without getting too in the weeds, you said the funding wasn't available, it got caught up in whatever process, so was it that it just didn't go through, through one department or another? You don't have to sell out any department.
No, I have to say unfortunately, I cannot answer that. I took over right as this project was out to bid, and when I came in, the bid results came back, and when looking into it, I realized that whoever, my predecessor, I put it out to bid without funding available. I don't know why that happened, but I-
It's, it's more just a statement about sometimes when we don't approve things, it costs more to not approve them in the long term, and we're not saving money in the end. So I just think we have to be mindful of that, that spending some of the money to make things more efficient and to, to grow and to bring things up to speed, that sometimes it's just something that we need to be considering. It's just a comment and a thought. That's it, really. I guess I'd be curious to know how much it costs in maintenance and all of that in the year that we didn't do anything.
We, we have a permanent maintenance program, so the callouts aren't costing us extra at this point, but if we do need parts or anything, that's when it becomes more expensive. It does cost us for parts, it doesn't cost us for the technicians to continuously come out and make adjustments to it to keep them running.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Dan?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public have any questions about the elevator replacement project at Fairfield Woods Middle School, the cooling tower replacement project at Roger Ledlow Middle School, or the emergency generator replacement at Fairfield Ledlow High School?
Kristi Matali, Board of Education, I just ask you, well first, thank you for putting this on the agenda for taking action tonight, and I ask you please to move these projects forward. As you heard, they're really a need for not only the school, but in the case of Ledlow and the generator, for the town as well. So, um, thank you, and I hope you will move it forward.
Thank you. So, I mean, my understanding obviously is, you know, the elevator is, is a situation that we discussed today, that it's going to literally take, once approved, a long time before we actually get the elevator.
14 to 16 weeks.
14 to 16 weeks. And so we, you know, obviously we cannot have staff members carrying children around outside of the building. It's not acceptable. And so, in the cooling tower replacement, there's a lot of backup information for anybody in the public who wants to read more about these things. There is quite a bit of information, so you can understand it. And obviously, the emergency generator not only serves the school, but it also serves as, as the town's emergency shelter when we have storms and such and we need to house people who are, have to leave their homes or evacuate. So I am going to make a motion to vote and approve item one, Fairfield Woods Middle School Elevator Replacement Project in the amount of $175,000, the Roger Ledlow Middle School Cooling Tower Replacement Project in the amount of $400,000, and the Fairfield Ledlow High School Emergency Generator Replacement Project in the amount of $200,000. Do I have it?
I'll second it. Yep.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
A side note, the non-reoccurring books and the capital books that you have are on the Board of Ed website.
Oh, okay. I just want to, then for the public, if you hear that these booklets that have the information are on the Board of Education's website, so the capital projects and the non-reoccurring. Thank you. Thank you. So, I mean, before we resume, I'm going to make a motion, and we can discuss these, but I'm gonna make a motion to remove items, for those who have these sheets, items nine through 15, not to, not to table, but to move to another date for discussion. Do we have to move it to a date certain?
Typically, it's a date certain for the next Board of Selectment meeting.
So the next Board of Selectment meeting, make a motion to move discussion on the Town Hall Fleet Replacement Program for $400,000 renovation to town offices. And just to be clear, that is to, this is a longstanding project to upgrade and renovate the building department, the conservation department, and the zoning department, so they, the people who work in those departments can work more efficiently and that the public can actually access them in a more productive way. And then the next one would be DPW three six-wheel dump trucks in the amount of 240,000, DPW tree bucket truck for 195, street sweeper, 442,000 for a street sweeper. Most of the public don't realize it costs that much. And IT use and permitting, which is $100,000. Now, this is an item that I think is vitally important to our community, and I'm looking forward to bringing this up next month. Our town, since taking office, I have learned that our town government is running in a sort of like 1970. And we don't have online permitting, we don't have departments connected to each other. Every other, most every other town in our state has the ability for residents and contractors to be able to pull permits online, and our town does not. And they're not even interconnected, the tax assessor, the conservation with zoning and with our building department. These, these departments bring and generate quite a bit of money for our town, and they're not operating in the 21st century. So this is something I'm really looking forward to. Our IT director has done a tremendous amount of work on this over the past year, meeting with all the departments that would be impacted by it, and I think it's gonna be a huge win for our town. I'm really looking forward to discussing it next month, Dave. So I know there's been some discussion about behind the scenes from other members of various boards, so that's why we are tabling, well, not tabling, moving, so we can have more discussion about these items. And the last one, or the, the last one is the fire station, and I believe the chief just want a little bit more time to be able to come back and have more information to share with the board. So we're going to now put these all to the next meeting. And so do I have a motion to move them to the next, do I have a second to, to my motion to move them to the next meeting?
Yes, I will second that.
All in favor?
Can I-
Sure, go right ahead.
Does it, and it's just for clarity-
Yes.
Does it make sense, since these were technically non-voting items? Should we keep them on the agenda and then move to vote? You see what I'm saying? So flip it if there are ones that we know we can vote on, but so that we can start the discussion?
That's a good question. I don't know. Would you?
Since it's on the agenda to hear and consider, then we, we still could hear and consider and not act.
Right, but then we would have to hear and consider again next meeting for, because Mr. Flynn would be there, and so it would be two times, and that doesn't really-
Okay.
Is that okay?
Great, makes sense.
Go ahead.
Next meeting, you have to vote on the entire package and a bond resolution.
Okay.
So they're all gonna be put together for the-
Those items? That we pulled out?
The whole, entire.
The whole thing will happen, but you've already voted on those items, so hopefully you wouldn't have to discuss them again, because you've already voted.
Right, just the new items.
Just the new items.
Correct. That's what I'm assuming.
That would be my hope for that.
Me too. I think Nancy would agree.
You're gonna have to vote on an overall bond resolution.
Gotcha, with the whole number.
With the whole number of everything.
That'll be, that'll be a fun meeting.
If you could clarify for me, so in voting to table till the next meeting-
Well, yeah.
Nine through 15, or moving to, to the table to the discussion, then we go back and we can still move to vote on-
The other items, correct. So we'll make a motion to move those items, nine through 15, to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move to the next item on the list, number two, Kings Highway Phase Three Design. Mr. Hurley, who has a fresh haircut.
Good afternoon, select women. The Kings Highway Pedestrian Improvements Project, Phase Three. It's a request for $300,000 for the design. The first two sections of the Kings Highway Pedestrian Improvement Project are complete, and the third phase is currently on two grant, separate grant lists. That's why we have two of them listed. Concurrently, we have what they call the TAP program, which covers about 80, it covers 80% reimbursement for design and construction, or the LOT-SIP grant, which the town would be responsible for the design, some of the right-of-way, but then 100% of the construction and inspection are covered. So I just wanted to point that out. Obviously, we'll go for the best one that's available or that we get awarded. The project involves new concrete sidewalks, curbs, median, assuming that that's a DOT requirement. Other improvements, ADA ramps, improvements at signalized intersection, and some turf establishment, and if there is room, we can try to do some landscaping, limited, but at least we could try to do some landscaping. In order to proceed with the grant project, the first select woman would need town approvals and a resolution authorizing and the approval of these grants for spending of the engineering design cost. So even though we got the approval, if, assuming we got the approval here, we usually have to go through, because the state likes to do things, you know?
Yeah, we know.
In duplicates, so. But we'll go through all that process, hopefully, and everything will work out fine. The design costs, they're dependent, as I said before, on which grant is awarded. If you need a location, I do have little maps if, if you need it, but it's the Kings Highway East from Villa Avenue towards the Bridge Port Line, that bridge, and it will include a section of Tunxus Hill Cut Off South from like Andros Diner down. Let's see, over the past-
Down to the beginning.
To that, like five-way intersection there-
Right there.
Moody Avenue.
Yep, okay.
Over the past few years, about three dozen members of the public, RTM members, have supported the sidewalk projects in this neighborhood and including this phase. The only other, the alternatives were to be reduce the scope or do nothing. The sidewalks that aren't covered in the project would need to be repaired, repaired and replaced by the town the next few years with no reimbursement. Project appropriations would be phased, as I said, this is designed, and then we would do the construction phase, and it won't be, we wouldn't spend any money until the grant is awarded and all the agreements are in place. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any for this project.
No, and I-
Okay. So, I mean, you, I just wanna, so this project is, you, you've seen it with all the curbing and, and I like to have a love-hate relationship with this project because, you know, the state came in and had certain criteria for safety, and they put those mediums, and I've spoken to Bill about it, you know, that's how I feel, and very high curb. So it is, it's made it difficult for businesses to have people who used to be able to park in front of their business now, sort of has an impact on some businesses in that area, because there's not a whole lot of parking anymore, because they've raised the curb up so much, and they have this big medium, so the street is more narrow, but it, it does look very nice, it's just maybe not that business-friendly, and I wish there was a way we could try to work with the state to come up with some way to modify the way the curbing is in front of the businesses. I know we've talked about it, but it, it makes sense, because this is the third part. And so it's all done, and this is the last leg of the project, and-
What I can further add to that is, before we even do the design, the, the state would have a kickoff meeting with the town and the consultant, and then usually about at 30% design phase, we have to go through a whole limo roar of all review. And because, again, depending on what grant, if there's federal requirements that we have to meet, then that's why they're pretty strict and they're not always flexible.
Right.
But in other cases, or if it is the state grant that we get, there might be a little bit of flexibility in terms of maybe if we, if they won't allow us to quote, eliminate the islands, but maybe we can shorten them up a little bit to create a little bit more maneuvering. Or if there's a way where if we can relocate a pole, so that, you know, we get the sidewalk not to be so wide, you know?
Right, right.
Because unfortunately, some of those poles for the other side of the project had like 32 wires on them, and they stand right in the middle of the sidewalk, and in order to meet the ADA or what they call pro-wag-
Right.
You need to have a four-foot clearance, so that the wheelchair or anybody with a stroller doesn't go into the road.
Right.
So we can certainly balance that, and we could take a, certainly a more in-detailed look as we move forward.
That'd be really good. It's just that some of the businesses really saw a drop in their business because of that. And I understand it's complicated because of all what you're saying, these requirements, but, you know, trying to revitalize Kings Highway and make it more business-friendly and have more businesses move into that area, this is kind of sort of counterproductive in a way. And I know it's not your fault, it's just there's rules and regulations, sometimes they don't always-
Yeah.
-get quite too business-friendly in making it-
Well, if there's one or two businesses in particular, you know, versus the whole grant, you know?
I know, but I don't want to hurt any business in this town.
Exactly, I understand.
To that end, if you spend this money, and I, I'm not sure how to ask this, but if we spend that money and there is such a public outcry against it, I, playing devil's advocate, is there a world in which we're spending this $300,000 and then we ultimately can't move forward with this plan?
If there was such public, as I said, I haven't heard that. I've heard the opposite. There's definitely support and whatever, but if for some reason there were some, excuse me, outcry, we could drop the project. But typically, when the municipality drops a project, whatever reimbursement the state or the feds had given us, we might be responsible. They can, they have, in the contract, they'll say they can go it. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't.
And I will say the counter to that is that anything that promotes alternate forms of transportation is ultimately a great thing for the community and the environment, and maybe one way that people will still be able to go to businesses. I don't know if that's fair to say, but-
Yeah, well, on that particular, we have noticed an uptick in pedestrian activity, and hopefully when the weather gets warm, that will help balance out, but, you know.
Are you working with the bicycle and pedestrian, the committee?
Yeah, yeah. I, I go to those meetings, yeah. That is a, they, they are a hard-working group, and actually, real quick, and as with anybody with the public involvement, when we go for these grants, many times these grants are very competitive. And when you have a backing of a neighborhood committee or a bike and pedestrian committee, and they can support that along with obviously town officials, it does go a long way, because when you apply for these grants, you know, public involvement or, or town support is always listed as a major item. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I mean, I think it's a good project. I think it's, it's attractive. I just would like a little more flexibility with our-
Oh, yeah, well, and I'll let you know when those meetings occur with the state.
Because there's more businesses down that end, too, on the right-hand side, so, you know, we don't want to impact them. Okay.
Fully understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any members from the public who have any questions about this specific item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion?
None.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a, well, we're back, we already made the motion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna bring up item four, Bronson Road Arch to Box Culver.
Three firsts. Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought Ryan goes one more.
Oh, that is three.
This one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Senior setter, design, for $100,000.
So this is similar to the transfer station and process, process-
So this is similar to the transfer station and process-wise, there's a bunch of improvements that need to be made at the senior center. As we all know, it used to be the former Oldfield School. The building is, for all intents and purposes, outdated. The bathrooms that are still being used are the ones that were being used for the school. So again, trying to basically come up with a capital plan, because there's a lot of requests for things down there.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to put that together, with the idea that we'd start replacing some of the most immediate needs, such as the bathrooms and ADA compliance. There's been reports that have been done already, there's a lot of asbestos abatement that needs to be done in the building, above the roof ceiling, so you could easily spend quite a bit of money in that building, and we want to be able to come back with the best numbers possible, but again, we're gonna use an RFQ that we just put together for architectural services, put together a proposal, and try to move this as quickly as possible so that we can, again, come back with a waterfall-type of projects for the senior center. There's, the building is limited in what can be done, though, because it is in the flood zone, so we have to take that into account.
Yeah, we can't go over a certain amount.
Correct.
Have you been working, and there's no question, I've been in the building, it definitely needs some love, have you been working directly with any of the senior groups or with the Bigelow Center to talk to them about sort of what their priorities would be, and are they aligned?
So basically, we would have the architect go to them directly, and then set up those types of meetings. James Ryan, the building official, has been having meetings with the senior center director. The idea is to get this on, to get this in front of them, get scope of work, and then have them kind of determine what needs to be addressed and what are the most critical issues. When we do have discussions with them, I mean, it's everything, so we need to kind of focus our, sharpen our pencil a little bit, and figure out what are the most critical needs. I mean, going to the bathroom, yes, you know, we have a senior population using a bathroom that was installed for an elementary school, I mean, I don't need to go out and design that to tell me that that's a critical need.
Right.
But, you know, progressing out over, you know, multi-year period to kind of put money, we need to figure out where we need to spend, best spend that money.
And if it should come to pass, I know there had been some discussions, I don't know what the current feeling is, but if the senior center were to move, would this, does this take, will this plan take that into account?
It's definitely something we'll write into the scope, because if it gets to be to the point where the architect is saying, you know, they want all these things and we can't accommodate them in the building, that's absolutely discussion that I'm sure the administration would have, and I'll keep them privy to that as long as I'm doing this.
Thanks.
It's hard when you go ask people what they want, I mean, it's everything, we have to manage that in the context of the entire town, so, you know, if they, the roof is leaking and they're saying, "We need a new gym," you know, we're gonna have to manage those types of requests.
Thanks.
Anything? I mean, I think it's long overdue.
I mean, clear.
I mean, there's so many, I mean, it's, we have an actively engaged senior community who uses that, and frankly, every town around us has a much nicer senior center than we do, and the seniors help build our community, they have the right to a nice-looking senior center that has different programs and the ability to put programs on, so I'm all for it, and I'm happy that it's finally gonna get close to, hopefully, we'll get through the town boards, because we do owe it to the seniors. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item from the public? Seeing none, any further discussion from the board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I will, that's it, I think we already made the motion, so I would, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and that's it. Okay, now, item number four, Bill, you're back up. Bronson Road Arch to Box Culvert for $250,000.
Bronson Road is a north-south minor arterial, it's in, the bridge is located between Hill Farm and Cedar Roads, it provides access in the area of the Greenfield Hill Village. The crossing over Brown's Brook was constructed as a stone masonry arch in 1857, and was widened to the north with a reinforced concrete slab bridge on stone masonry abutments in 1970. The bridge, most people might not even realize, is a bridge there, is only eight feet long, but it is 40 feet in width. The bridge has been rated by the Connecticut DOT as being in fair to poor condition, and the bridge has been recommended for repair or replacement. The bridge project would go out to contract bid. The engineering department is performing the design of the repair in-house, and will provide plans and specifications for contract bid. Local permits will be required. The type of the bridge is not eligible for local bridge grant funding without major design improvements, hydraulic analysis, and meeting those federal guidelines, so we've elected for this one to go with a repair, and unlike many of the other bridges, this one will not have grant money associated with it. It does not meet current bridge standards, if we do nothing, the bridge will eventually have its weight limit reduced, that would impact the local and commuter traffic, some businesses, and could eventually live, lead to eventual limitations or closures. It's pretty straightforward, the bridge needs to be replaced. The town has well over 50 bridges, and then if you count the culverts, we're probably in the neighborhood of at least 75, and so we do try to replace one or two per year, always looking for grant money, but in this case, it was just a repair.
Awesome.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I just want to say, for the record, that you and I had a chance to speak this morning, and so I just wanted to thank you, so I also had an opportunity to ask some of the questions that I had, that, it's all here, so again, if anyone is interested in diving deeper, it is, the information is available, so.
So just for clarification purposes, how can members of the public access this information? Is it on the town's website?
The background material.
All of this? Okay, just want to make sure. So anybody who wants to read more about these projects, they can go to the town's website, I mean, it's a good project, and frankly, Bill, I'd give you a compliment, you do a very good job.
Oh, thank you.
At putting together all the information so the people can understand it, and you explain it well, and so obviously, most of the bridges in Connecticut are not doing too well, for a host of reasons, but I support this, I think this is an important thing that we should be doing, and God forbid, we shouldn't slow down traffic over there, that would be a real problem. So, I'm gonna open it up to the public for any discussions, anyone who would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, I bring it back to the board, any additional comments? So I make a motion to approve item number four, Bronson Road Arch to Box Culvert D and C, in the amount of $250,000.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Motion carries, item is approved.
Thank you.
Oh, I think I'm on the next couple.
Oh, are you next?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Storm system improvements, you're up.
Okay, storm system improvements for various townwide neighborhoods, we're seeking $500,000 to basically get started on a lot of, but this is construction improvements. In September and October of 2018, and the summer of 2019, several areas in town experienced severe and even more frequent flooding than in the past, some of the ones even experienced way back in 2007 as well. The purpose of the project is to address many neighborhood complaints and reduce flooding potential in certain areas of town, in some cases, eliminating the storm system bottlenecks by increasing the pipe sizes, providing more drainage structures, or providing more detention areas, resolving natural or utility conflicts would help reduce the flooding potential and frequency. The proposals include replacement of the undersized storm systems, as I mentioned before, creating detention areas, installing bypass pipes, cleaning channels, removing obstructions and bottlenecks, and installing additional drainage structures. All projects, we investigate, we will investigate the environmental impacts, the loss of wetlands, impacts to water courses, we also have to check with higher velocities through the pipe network versus natural channels, and so we'll have to go through all the permit processes if they're applicable. Under the 14 points, number 13, other considerations, and this is pretty big, I just wanted to point it out, solving the flooding issues require balancing the impacts. Simply increasing the pipe sizes may help one neighborhood, but they may cause severe impacts to the downstream, the neighborhood downstream. So in some cases, we can eliminate the bottlenecks, because if the bottleneck occurred and the water just went up and over the road and on the next one, we're not really increasing runoff, but in other cases, if you had a 24-inch pipe and now you make it a 48, and it goes on to the other neighborhood, there would be significant impacts. So it really is a balancing act, and typically, we found out through engineering, providing detention is usually the best way to reduce the flooding potential and improve the situation for the neighborhoods downstream. I just want to highlight that, or unfortunately, not highlight, but point out, some of the homes have been built on formal ponds, they've been, streams have been filled in, they're in flood plains before the regulations, and those are really, really difficult to address, but in some cases, again, with a detention, we'll at least be able to maybe lower those floodwaters, or reduce the frequency that those areas get flooded. So I just want to point out that this is storm sewers, for the most part, and some of the projects would be performed by the DPW in-house, while others would go out to contract bid, meeting the purchasing and the town requirements. And again, I'm available to answer any questions before, during, or even after the budget process here to discuss these.
So, Bill, I mean, it says here, I mean, I know it's so, just for the public's edification, it's the Tunxus Hill detention area, Agonquin, Melville Playground, Owen Fish, Woodfield Village.
Okay, that's, excuse me, I just want to interrupt, that's gonna be my next request, that's the Rooster River flooding detention.
Right, they're, well, they're kind of intertwined, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's what I was wanting to say to you.
Yeah.
So are these the two projects sort of with each other, are they?
They're really separate, but in some cases, some of the projects, like Agonquin, and then there's a couple of other ones, like Littlebrook, for example.
Right.
They're kind of like two phases. The one is the mini-phase, which would be the storm system improvements, where maybe we could eliminate a bottleneck, or add a couple of catch basin structures, relatively low, you know, cost or whatever is part of that request. Then the other would be a nearby detention area, which is gonna be our next request.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we have like 60 neighborhoods listed that was in that packet, we have not quite prioritized them yet, and that's something, you know, cost-benefit analysis, and we do know, unfortunately, some that have experienced flooding three or four times in a year, and that's too much, and so those are gonna be given the priority, but I just wanted to point out, we have plenty of them, maybe if this works well, we'll continue, you know, the process, maybe next year or the year after, but 500,000 would really be a jumpstart where we could tackle, I would say, at least a dozen of these neighborhoods of the major or, you know, bigger projects, and then maybe even get rid of 10 or 15 of the real small or, you know, low-hanging fruit.
Right.
And what was encouraging to me, and I hope provides some sense of comfort and encouragement to the community, is that you're really working collaboratively with WPCA, with conservation, with the DPW, and looking at these issues holistically, so it's not just about this neighborhood, it's, you're really working to figure out the whole, so I really appreciated that you spent the time this morning explaining all this.
Sure, thanks.
Do you have any questions?
No. Again, it's in here?
Right.
And you spent time and explained it, and the engineering?
Yes.
And on some of these costs, when the DPW can do it in-house, you know, it lowers the cost some, so.
So are there any members of the public who have a question on this item or a comment?
Hi, so I'm Dick Mahusky, Colonial Drive, I'm also a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, so I'm a little bit aware of these topics, and our board has been encouraging Public Works to put money in the budget for these type of things, and one of the general comments I want to make is that these things cost money to do, and it directly impacts our citizens, but it seems that when it comes to budget time, and we have to keep that mill rate down, and everything else is sacrificed, so I was encouraged by hearing your comments that we have a lot of deferred activities and maintenance activities, improvement activities, which I hope we continue to focus on into the future. But all of these items, I mean, if you look at the specific list bill put together, there's 68 listed items, and if you add up the totals, it's between 4.1 and 5.1 million dollars, with seven items still with a TBD price tag on them, so we're talking about real money here. The other comment I would like to just generally make is that, so this is for $500,000, which is 10% of that potential total.
Right.
The other thing, to my personal awareness, is that this is bonded capital activity, so the $500,000 bonded over 20 years is $25,000 a year, plus the interest-carrying cost, but the impact to the mill rate is maybe not as significant as people have been afraid of in the past, so speaking for myself, this hasn't been voted on by the Flood and Erosion Control Board, but I can represent that we all feel the same way on that board, we need to make these improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or a question? And again, I would agree, it seems like, you know, when the state's done this in the past in towns, and you kick things down, you know, kick the can down the road, it's not going anywhere, it just adds up, so we have a lot of neighborhoods that are flooding, way more than they ever have, and I mean, the Rooster River issue has been a problem for a long, long time, long, 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 long time. So hopefully, this will be the beginning of starting to address some of these problems, because I know new problems are gonna come, so we should just get rid of the old problems. Anyone else, does anyone want to comment? So I'll bring it back to the board, a motion to approve the storm system improvements in the amount of $500,000.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Rooster River, which works dovetails with this project.
Yep. I did bring this little map here just to show the areas that have been studied, if you wanted to look at that, if you have to. Rooster River detention area study, right now, we're looking at $320,000 for the design, the plans, specifications, and contract bid documents for six locations. Back in 2006 and '07, and again in 2018, Rooster River overflowed its banks and flooded several streets and neighborhoods. For a few neighborhoods, the flooding has occurred even more frequently. After holding a handful of neighborhood meetings, Fairfield DPW hired a consultant to perform a preliminary hydraulic study for the Rooster River watershed, with a concept designed for seven strategic locations. The current study concentrated on the potential detention area sites that would provide some relief for property and homeowners within the watershed. The report recommended improvements at six of those seven locations. Again, much like the other project, the purpose of this is to address many of the neighborhood complaints and reduce flooding, we can maybe hang it there?
Thank you.
And in most cases, holding back stormwater runoff through detention reduces the flow rate and reduces the amount of flooding in the areas downstream that would benefit most of the property and homeowners. This proposal also includes the hydrologic analysis, and as I mentioned before, design plans, specifications, contract bid documents for construction of these detention areas. In some cases, excavation would be required, and in most cases, a berm or dike would be constructed to hold back the water and to limit the environmental impacts through the permitting process. The original concept here is, as I said, we had a host of meetings, and now, you know, it just, the timing worked it that we're making this request as well. I would like to go back to those neighborhood meetings, you know, people want to have updates on that, and so we plan on at least hosting one, maybe... And so we plan on at least hosting one, maybe, again, breaking them down. We, I think, held three of them. And to go over, you know, again, some of these detention areas, and just let people know that we're taking the next step forward in trying to address these concerns.
Was those two years ago, though?
They were, no, no. We had them in 2019, but they were early. Most of them were in the spring.
I remember going to them.
Yeah. Yeah, we had one, one that over 100 people attended.
I was there.
Yeah. And then the other two were a little bit smaller neighborhood ones. I think Bennett and Bond Neighborhood, that group, and the Littlebrook Neighborhood, we met with. Because as I said, those are ones that were getting flooded several times.
Do you envision holding these, if this, if the funding moves forward, then holding the meetings, or would you want to hold it prior? What is your plan?
Well, no, we could, we could hold it concurrently or even after, because, again, they're just going to start the design. And so, you know, we would want some public feedback on that design. So most likely, the way I envisioned it is, the public would now, assuming it goes through the budget process, okay, good, the town's now putting the money where their mouth is, so to speak, and now they're going to get the design. And at, say, a 30% design typically is when we say, okay, before we get too far in design, but we at least have enough to show people, then we can, we can hold those meetings. As always, if any one neighborhood wanted to hold a meeting, you know, beforehand in a smaller scale, we could do that as well.
Do you have, like, email lists from those meetings? Do people sign in? Or was it the Rooster River Neighborhood Group that has them?
Yeah, well, yeah, the DPW was compiling it, but then we had an illness and then some other unfortunate circumstance. I don't know if those email lists have been completely completed or not, but we definitely have access to that, or the originals. And we can meet with the neighborhoods if need be.
Well, I just think it's important that they realize.
Oh, sure.
This item is even being considered, and they might want to speak in favor of it with the other town boards, because people are truly impacted in a very significant way.
Right. Well, in those neighborhoods where we already had, they kind of designated neighborhood liaisons or leaders. So I know I have those emails, and I can reach out to them, and hopefully, they can spread the word.
Well, just so they know.
Or just they show up. Yeah, right. And the same thing, even if they can't make it to a meeting, having an email saying that they support the project is always helpful.
Sure.
It's my understanding that for the items being presented, one through eight, although, Brian, I know some of those were under your purview, all of these have been, with the exception of the storm system, unless it's this one before us.
Yeah.
It's this one. But that's only because we just didn't have all the information at the time of the October Capitol Workshop.
That's correct.
But again, all of this has been, is not new information. It's been before, it was presented to the Board of Finance twice.
Yeah, twice before, yeah, well, Board of Selectmen twice, and the Board of Finance.
At the Capitol Workshop in October.
Yes. Right, correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, that this isn't something that we're just seeing now, that this has been in the works for a long time.
But this specific request, this specific request would be new, but they are definitely aware of the Rooster River and the storm flooding problems.
But new, only, explain what you had to explain to me this morning. It's new only because, new because the grant money hadn't come through.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't on this, this October's waterfall charter capital improvements list, because we were waiting for the consultant's proposal. And we went back and forth a couple of months on the scope. And so now, they just gave it to me January 2nd, so that's how I'm able to. And even there, the 320 is on the higher, it said 240 to 320, but I've learned, ask for the higher number, just in case, if, you know, and then I have to go back. So maybe we get lucky, and it's a little bit less than that, but for now, the request was for 320.
And again, I just want to reiterate and thank the Board of Selectmen for acting, for amending to act on these, because they have been something that has been talked around, and it's long overdue. And I talked to a lot of residents who have been very frustrated by this and ready for us to be able to do something. So I'm pleased to be able to support this today.
And the other thing I just want to mention, too, is that we'll continue to work with Bridgeport and Trumbull and MetroCog for applying for any potential grants for the construction of the projects, and work together, just for the informational purposes, that Bridgeport has a few detention area improvements they've been working on, and trying to increase storage at Ox Brook Pond, at Elton Rogers Park, and Shreve Park. They're trying to do some improvements there. We're obviously going to work with the City of Bridgeport for the Fairchild Wheeler, which is probably the most beneficial for all, because it's at the higher end of the watershed. So holding back that water would be a tremendous benefit for anybody downstream.
Huge.
And we'll use the example that we had with the Mountain Laurel Cemetery, which we had worked with Bridgeport, and that went very well, so.
We should definitely talk about how we can set up meetings with them together, because we really need to start working together with them.
Agreed.
Awesome. All right. Any members of the public who have a comment or a question?
Mahusky, Colonial Drive. So this should be no surprise that the Flood and Erosion Control Board is emphatically in favor of this project going forward. This, you were talking about the timing, this goes back to, to use Bill's word, the rain bomb of September of 2018.
Yeah.
And the scientists throughout the world would suggest that we're not going to have fewer rain bombs as time goes on. So getting these detention areas in place are important. I might also point out that if anybody wants to see some detail on the scope of what's in the collective mind's eye, on our webpage, Flood and Erosion Control Board, which is accessible through the town website, we have a copy, a PDF copy of Malona McBroom's report there. And that includes some drawings of potential sites. And this kind of brings in the idea of the design. And so you look at the drawings, and say, okay, well, we have it. Let's go get the front-end loaders and move the dirt around and make the retention pond. But when you get down into the weeds with all of the regulations and things that we have, it's not as simple as it would appear to an uninformed person such as myself. So again, we just 100% support this item.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking on that. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard, or has a question on this item? Bring it back to the board.
Just one more comment to make.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I've heard it said before, that departments have had a tendency to be siloed, and I'm just appreciative of the opportunity and the fact that you are working collaboratively, and again, I just want to reiterate that, with the water pollution, with flood and erosion, with conservation, so that, you know, we're not working in silos, so that if there's pipe to be replaced, and there's an opportunity, then that can happen at the same time, and it's efficient, and it's, it's good governance, it's also a good, efficient use of our dollars. So, thank you.
So I am going to make a motion to approve Rooster River Detention Area Study in the amount of $320,000. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item is approved. Thanks, Bill. The next item is number seven, Independence Hall Boiler. I like this one, Brian, because my office is typically about 200 degrees.
Mine, too. Brian Carey, Conservation Director for the town. So this is pretty straightforward. The boilers in this building are 41 years old. They're past their useful age. They need to be replaced. James Ryan, who's the building maintenance division head, came to me and said that this was an immediate need. So we actually added it onto the non-recurring capital projects. If you've gone down there, you can see the condition. This is for everything, soup nuts. There is some asbestos abatement that needs to be done. But we're hoping to have this, if approved, completed in, from the time of ordering to installation, they're talking about 70 days, oh, 30 days, I'm sorry, for the installation. This would be done, obviously, during the summer, just to keep the heat off, while the heat is off. But there's been quotes provided, so if there's any questions for that.
Does this include the appropriate zones that were supposed to be installed and never were?
Yes, I asked James Ryan about that, and that is something that will be addressed as part of this project.
Whoa, everybody in this building would be so grateful. Some people are freezing, some people are sweating, it's.
That's right.
Yes.
I've just heard a few comments leading up to this meeting, that why are we rushing, and I would hope that this highlights the fact that that's not true, that this is something that we do need to address, and that.
So this was, I believe, on the capital project requests of last year, and then it was taken off. The building has two boilers, it's only running on one right now. In a pinch, according to James, we could start the other one, but it's not advised. Things, basically, everyone has come and looked at it, says it needs to be replaced.
So as someone who actually owns a heating and air conditioning company, I can tell you that 30 years is about all you get.
Right.
And we'll even tell people, we're sorry, you know, we're just, you know, we're not going to come out to your house every weekend to fix your furnace. You need to suck it up and get a new one. So 41 years is, I think, that's it. So I'm all in favor of this.
As am I. That's an official motion.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on the 41-year-old boiler in Independence Hall being replaced? Say none. Back to the board. Any additional comments? I make a motion to approve the Independence Hall 41-year-old boiler replacement at $115,000.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I hope it makes it through. That'd be good. Okay. Oh, last one, Brian.
Last one.
Woo-hoo. Okay, number eight, transfer station trash compactors, in the amount of $354,000.
So the town purchased new compactors in 2018. From the best I can understand it, they were undersized, not the right ones. They can't hold, they can't handle the amount of material that's brought into the building every day, requiring there to be some work done on overtime. It's just not functional for the long term. This request is to, we actually designed compactor specifications, went out the bid, and this is the cost to replace the existing compactors with new ones that will meet the requirements of the facility. The original compactors that were replaced 18 months ago were the originals for the building. The ones that were purchased last year were just undersized, they can't handle the amount of waste that comes in.
Can you just talk a little bit more about what not doing this would, would happen for the town?
So right now, we're paying overtime to basically have the onsite contractor work to compact all of the material that should be compacted in a normal workday. It's taking another two hours a day to do that work. It's just not an efficient way to go about it. And if we do that, we are committing ourselves to paying overtime into the future. I mean, there's been some changes at the transfer station, the amount of waste because of the recycling that needs to be compacted, and some of the different waste streams that we've generated that normally were hauled offsite. But the compactors that were purchased just are not, the cycling is longer, it's just not working the same as the old compactors.
And is this something also, and forgive me for not knowing the answer to this, was this on the capital, was this presented before, or is this?
I don't know if the last ones were. This is something that brought to my attention in the September timeframe, so I don't know the entire backstory of it. All I know is that moving forward, the condition, the compactors that are in use right now
Sorry, I'm just trying to get my head around this. Explain a little bit more, what that means, what's happening with the overflow? Is it, if there are environmental issues?
So basically, if you, I mean, just to really simplify it, because I had to understand it as well and go down there. If you, if the facility takes, let's say, 100 tons of trash a day, and the compactors can compact, you know, 10, 10 tons an hour, and that takes 10 hours, we are now taking 15 hours to compact the 100 tons. So rather than work, you know, normal hours, someone has to sit there and run the compactor for a longer period of time to handle the same amount of waste that has been historically coming to the site. So we bought undersized compactors, or compactors that were described to us to be able to handle the additional workload because of the amount of, you know, cycle time. So when you hit the button, the compactor runs through a cycle time, and if it runs a slower cycle time than the previous compactors, the amount of hours you have to work at the plant are going to go up.
I mean, I've, and I've been there, I've seen it.
Yeah.
I've seen the overflow, I've seen, I've smelled the overflow. So at the end of the spend of $354,000, that takes care of that, it takes care of the overtime, any?
It should be back to, I wouldn't say back to normal, it should be better than it was, even when we had the compactors that were functioning for the majority of the life of that facility.
And is there installation costs above and beyond, sort of, sorry, just tell me what?
So the town has had a history of just kind of waiting to get the funding approved, and then going out to bid. This was a critical need, so we actually went out to bid for this. So the number you see is, we could go sign a contract tomorrow with that and let them, because this is critical, to get that situation corrected.
And is it in here, or did you say, so from the time they start, like shovel in or whatever, material, tools are in the bid?
Yeah, so it's in the, so the exact delivery date is listed in the bid, I don't have it in front of me. We have had multiple discussions with this vendor. We weren't going to, the bids came in, and they've been provided to you, they were, this was the lowest bidder, so we went through a pretty substantial process to qualify this bidder, looking at other sites in the United States, because he's actually a Canadian company. But they're literally manufacturing the compactors to the town's specifications. Once we get a contract with him, they'll come down, measure everything, make sure it fits. And it's, so the transfer station facility, Westport, they were all built at the same time, they're all same era, so they basically have a similar, similar system that we do, and we use their bid to get these compactors.
And I think it's important to note in your, the 14-point proposal that you had put together, the 14-point questionnaire, that they are closed hydraulic, so there's no chance of an oil spill.
That's correct.
I think the goal will be glad to hear that. And in terms of, like, the safety issue, it's not just about the overtime in terms of the dollars, but the risk factors for injury, et cetera.
That's also correct.
I mean, so I think that's really important to point out. And I think also that there's a warranty in terms of the work, can you talk about that?
So there's a three-year warranty on the compactor, so if there's anything that's basically, since they're being built to spec, if there's anything that's not right, we will be able to call the vendor back, and they will be required to fix it. And then, just through a normal warranty process, if anything breaks during those three years, they will be 100% responsible for coming back and changing hoses, or whatever it may be.
And in talking with the other department heads, when you talk about this being critical, they would concur that this is a critical project and a detention?
Based on the overtime requirement right now, I would say yes.
Hey, members from the public who would like to comment on this item?
Yes, Craig Curley, 109 Lakewood Drive. A question just came to mind as I was hearing this, and certainly recognize that a 41-year-old boiler needs to be replaced and is beyond its useful life. And it's unfortunate that the town made a purchase of an undersized compactor, but considering that it was purchased in 2018, I'd be curious to know whether there was any salvage value or something that the town could get back, because it may not meet our needs, but it may meet someone else's.
I asked that question when I found out about this a couple weeks ago.
I asked that question before we went out to bid, and then I went and contacted other vendors. So the bid pricing you have is actually less, the cost to salvage those. But from what I understand about compactors, and trust me, I've learned everything I possibly can about them now. But from what I understand about compactors, and trust me, I've learned everything I possibly can about them now. They, there's not a lot of salvage value to these. So we're basically getting, I think it's $40,000, $20,000 or $40,000, I can't remember. But that was put into the bid as, as a line item. So whatever the bid came back is, it's being reduced by that amount, let me, I'll tell you right now. Yeah, so the trade-in allowance for the existing is $10,000 apiece for a total of $20,000. I tried to call other vendors to see people who didn't even bid, and there was really no interest in these types of, in the compactors that we have at the, at the facility right now.
Just want to make it clear that it's unfortunate that this was undersized and that you were not responsible for ordering them. So it's not a good thing. We want to be very careful with taxpayer money whenever ordering items that cost a lot of money and making sure that they work appropriately and handle this job they're supposed to handle. And I'm not particularly pleased about this at all. And we're going to be much more careful going forward to making sure that items that are purchased with taxpayer money are purchased appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. It's a frustrating expense, but one we have to bear, in my opinion, so I'll support it. I just, that's why I'm sort of digging with these questions, and I think the things that we can't point out, it's, it just.
They're good questions.
And it is, you know, it is unfortunately what it is, because we need an appropriate compact, we need appropriate compactor, so.
Yep, we sure do. You should see those overtime bills. Is there any questions from the public or any comments? Any more additional questions? Back to the board. I will make a motion to approve item number eight, transfer station trash compactors in the amount of $354,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So I just want to reflect again to make it clear for the minutes that I, in the non-recurring Capitol projects and associated bond issuances, items one through eight, and items 16 and 17 were amended on the agenda to include voting and to move them forward. Those items have been voted on and moved forward. And also, the Board of Education's, three items, non-recurring items, were also amended and voted on and moved forward, just for the record, to make it clear in the minutes. Okay. Thank you, everyone who presented. I appreciate it. The next item, sorry, Sands, make you wait so long. You pulled the short end of the stick there. Number eight, Health Director, which requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear and consider act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Health Director. Director of Health resolved that the first select woman of the Town of Fairfield is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the Town of Fairfield a contract. And any amendments therefore with the Connecticut Department of Public Health for $45,885, approximately $15,295 per year of this three-year contract, preventative health and health services block grant for policy and environmental change for chronic disease prevention for the period of October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2022. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve.
I will second. Mr. Curly, would you like to present the item?
Sure. So this is a grant that we've received for decades, a preventative health block grant. Comes from the state of Connecticut. It's roughly a little over $15,000 a year for three years. We use this to fund the, currently, we use this to fund the work that the pedestrian and bicycle committee are doing related to bike routes. And so we've funded the, the striping and signage and stenciling on the roads to create the existing bike routes in town. This will continue that work. That work has won, you know, awards from CDC as, as best practices for that funding. In addition, the funds will go to support our Healthy for Life program, which is our healthy restaurant program where we have restaurateurs submit menu items. They meet with a registered dietitian. They make those, meet the criteria for National Restaurant Association to be considered a healthy menu item. And then we work with promoting those restaurants and providing them placards and door, door signage to promote the fact that they have these Healthy for Life, healthy menu items. And so that's a three-year grant. We'll be continuing that work with those particular projects.
I remember hearing this grant before when I was serving on the RTM. Do you, are there, and not for this meeting, but I'm curious, this is a great thing that you do in terms of the restaurants and promoting that. Do you have a list of successes from this grant and how this is an effective, important grant?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've used this funding to do a lot of things. And, you know, I don't have a list with me, but we've, you know, created the, the Mill Plain Road Bike, Bike Route. That was the one that was picked up on by CDC and featured on their website as a success story. We've done the Library to Library Route has been approved. We're most of the way through striping and signage for the Shoreline Route. And just promoting that, trying to, you know, it's, it's about making environmental change to change the culture, to get people out and more active and feel comfortable being active and feel safe in being active. So those things, the, the Healthy Restaurant Program is, you know, we do have several restaurants. We're, it's a collaborative project with the Norwalk Health Department that we're doing this. And we, other health departments are interested, but they just haven't come on board yet. But we're, we're working to sort of increase those numbers and promote it every year.
And perhaps, and maybe you're already doing this, but working with the Chamber of Commerce and with Mark Barnhart to really promote, because these are great success stories.
Yep.
You know, it's easy to sort of complain about the things that aren't working, but when things are going great, it, it's important that we celebrate that too.
Yep.
And so, and even, you know, working with those bodies, the Chamber and economic development.
Yep, and we're always working with Mark and, and with the Beg, Ped Committee. You know, they're the ones who, you know, you know, we, we secure the funding, but they're the ones, we let them decide, what are you focusing on this year and where do you, how do you want to use it? And so it's a great collaboration in that respect.
Thank you.
Awesome. Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none? Back to the body. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and you're up next. Okay, stay there. Item number nine. Also requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Health, resolved that the, that the first select woman of the Town of Fairfield is empowered to execute, authorize, and approve on behalf of the Town of Fairfield any and all contracts or amendments therefore within the Connecticut Region One Essential Support Function. A E S F eight, Public Health Preparedness Medical Reserve Corp. Grant Fiduciary Organization, that's a mouthful, with regard to the CDC 2019 to 2024 Public Health Emergency Preparedness Cooperative Agreement with a grant funding period from July 1, 2019 through July 30, 2024. Shall, funding shall be for $47,762 per year for each of the five years, as amended by the CDC, state of Connecticut, or the Region One ESF eight Public Health Preparedness Medical Reserve Corps Grant Fiduciary Organization, shall cover the cost to support Fairfield's continued Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response Efforts and Medical Reserve Corps activities. All costs are 100% reimbursable from the CDC 2019, 2024. P H E P Cooperative Agreement via the state of Connecticut, Connecticut Region One ESF eight Fiduciary Organization. May I have a motion to approve?
I, I will move to approve that.
I will second. Mr. Curly?
And my apologies for the resolution.
Thank you, God.
So what I was trying to, you know, achieve there is one of the reasons why I'm here. So we are currently in a fi, you know, a five-year grant cycle with the CDC. What the CDC did recently is say, well, what we're going to do is call the first two years Budget Period One and Supplemental Budget Period One, and then we're going to enter into a new five-year agreement. And so the previous resolution had the same language here or any amendments thereof. And in addition, the, the last resolution was specific to the fiduciary, being Yale University or Yale Health Systems was the fiduciary. But we've had some things change in the preparedness world, again, with this, this grant cycle changing and with the fiduciary changing and with some of the language that they're using. So we felt like it's best to come before you with a new resolution that clarifies all this and straightens it out so that a few years down the road, when things, you know, the name of the grant is actually different, that it's, it's all clarified now. So we're sort of in a five-year cycle. We've been approved and I've done that. But enough has changed. We felt like, let's come before it for a new resolution for the 19- to 24-year cycle with this new, new cooperative agreement that the CDC issued. So this is the same funding that we've got for 18 years. It's, you know, it's been reduced over the years to where we're getting about $47,000. That includes Medical Reserve Corps funding, our 350-member volunteer group of medical and non-medical professionals that support the, the Health Department and the shelter and other activities around town during emergencies alongside the CERT team. So this is the, the same funding. It's the same, you know, CDC cooperative agreement. It comes down. It's just going to a different fiduciary right now, and the, the years changed slightly. So that's why we're coming back before you for another resolution.
Thank you.
So it's, the year, the, the language has changed, but is what you're doing exactly the same? Are you constantly sort of reevaluating and looking, is that impact? If you are making changes, does it impact this at all?
So every year with this particular grant, the deliverables do change. So there's always, the CDC comes out and says, oh, this year we want to focus on mass fatality arrangements. And this year we want to focus on mass dispensing. So this cycle has a, has a mass dispensing focus, and there's been some changes in how the state organizes mass dispensing. You know, we used to have 42 different mass dispensing areas. We've gone down to five regional mass dispensing areas. We'll still have the point of dispensing in, in the Town of Fairfield that we had before. It just, the, the way it connects to the region is a little different. The way we'll, we'll get the medicine from the state down to the local dispensing site will be different. You know, we'll go to a regional dispensing site, a regional distribution site, excuse me. So it's those types of changes. So those are reflected in the contract deliverables that, that will change every year. And so, but the focus of this will be predominantly mass dispensing for the next five years. We'll have a large-scale exercise in Bridgeport next year. And then in two years from now, we'll have a large-scale, full-scale dispensing exercise in Fairfield.
But so if the CDC is determining the deliverables, do they, and they don't necessarily align with where Fairfield is at, is, is that something you still have to comply? Is there room for, hey, we want to try this this year? And is there flexibility in this at all?
So we, we have some flexibility in what we do in terms of the activities that, so they, this hires three, essentially three part-time preparedness planners that are, work for other health departments in the region, work for the Town of Fairfield. That's what this funding supports. They comply with all the deliverables, but then they also do those things that we need to do. Update our plans, coordinate our plans with the regional plans to organize and plan for the exercises that we have to do. So, but for example, it wasn't a contract deliverable. With just last month, we held a, a call center exercise because we have new phone system in town that, and that brought with it some enhanced capacities for the call center. And so now we have a call center that can travel anywhere in town, as long as there's an ethernet jack that's connected to the town system. We'll have a call center anywhere, anywhere in town. And so we had an exercise for that. That wasn't a contract deliverable, but we had our preparedness folks work on that. So it does benefit the town in other ways to have this funding come in and, and work in addition to.
And I ask the questions more out of curiosity, because if, you know, I think it's an opportunity for not just us to understand, but for the residents to understand the great work that's being done here. And, and a lot of it, people don't even know about, or it happens behind the scenes.
Yep.
So it's just another example of, of the value add of, of being here in Fairfield.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, this work supports what the chiefs do, and they support us, and we collaborate on a lot of these things. Last year, we had a, a meeting with all our functional and access need service providers in town with fire and police and public works and social services. And, you know, that, this grant funding supported that, you know. So it's a great collaborative thing for the great team that we have leading our preparedness efforts in town.
Great.
Does anyone have any questions on this or any comments on this item? Hearing none. Back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sands. Okay. We are up. Next, item number 10. Smith Richardson Clubhouse Building Committee to hear an update from Smith Richardson Clubhouse Project. Mr. Curly is here. I am going to.
Good evening.
After a break, but you go right ahead.
Do you want to take a five-minute break or?
Want to take a five-minute break, or do you want to?
I defer to you.
I say you go, and I'll be back.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
I won't be that long.
That's fine. So.
Hello.
Hi, Craig Curly. I'm the chairman of the H. Smith Richardson Building Committee, as you know, Nancy. Today, I was last in front of this board in October, providing an update. And with the new Board of Selectmen, it makes sense to come back today.
Select women, as the case may be?
And select women, yes. So, so that's why I'm here. So, and I, I might repeat myself when Brenda gets back, because as a RTM member in the last term, you're familiar with this project. Brenda is not necessarily familiar. On the map here that I'm displaying, this is the current layout. So Morehouse Highway here comes into the parking lot, which is configured this way. The 18th Green is here. The First T is over here, and then the clubhouse is currently situated here. So this is the newly configured, I'll, I'll put this here just so that. This is the newly configured setup, very similar configuration, but the parking lot is actually reconfigured and regraded. The clubhouse is repositioned so that it's overlooking the 18th Green, and it's a much more efficient layout. Much, it will also be a much more efficient facility. So just to give a little bit of background on the, on the project, again, you're, you're a bit familiar, but with the new board, I wanted to provide this background. But the, the clubhouse was built in 1971. Golf course opened in 1972, and since opening, no significant renovations or upgrades have been performed to the clubhouse. In 2006, the town created a committee to explore renovations or replacement of the clubhouse, but at that time, no action was taken. In 2014, the town had the Town Facilities Commission assess the condition of the clubhouse. The conclusion was that the building was failing in almost all categories, the roof, the mechanicals, the electrical, the plumbing. And it was already beyond its useful life, but at that time, no further action was taken. In January of 2018, the town did form the current Smith Richardson Building Committee and approved $250,000 to develop a conceptual design and, and other alternatives for the town to consider. And that was two years ago. Last January, the, the town actually approved a $7.02 million bond resolution to proceed with replacing the, the clubhouse in Cart Barn. What's important to note is, and I'll pause for a second. So Brenda, this is the current layout of the, of, of the golf course, the parking lot, the clubhouse. It's been repositioned, and, and I was just giving a little bit of the background on, on the project. What's really important to note today, especially as we lead up to the budget process for the town, is that when, when the bond resolution was requested a year ago, the building committee requested $7.3 million. The project was left virtually intact, but the Board of Selectmen moved to remove $280,000 from the funding, but also removed the, the scope of work related to the parking lot. So right now, the $7.02 million that has been approved for our project does not include a parking lot. Now, it does, it does include some of the work associated with preparing the parking lot, but ultimately, the finishing of the parking lot, the $280,000, was meant to be moved into the Department of Public Works operating budget. of Public Works operating budget for the current upcoming budget season. So as you get ready to approve the operating budgets for DPW, there should be an additional $280,000 for, on the paving line, which would be earmarked for this project. So if we turn to page four of the handouts, I just created a little bit of a walk for the 7.3 and what makes that up that we originally requested. I note the $280,000 that was removed, leaving our final budget at 7.02. At the time, the construction budget component of the $7 million was $5.4 million for the construction itself. All of the bids that came in were in excess of that number. So the lowest qualified bidder came in at roughly 5.9, but we were able to work to make some changes, and the contractor made some concessions, and ultimately, we were able to move forward with a construction budget of 5.6 million. That, with the changes that we were able to make, we were able to maintain roughly a $550,000 contingency. If you notice in the middle column on page four, our contingency at the time was $551,000, and where we ultimately are today is $549,000. So working with the purchasing department, we were very comfortable that we were able to make an award with the general contractor. And even though on the construction line item, it was $200,000 above our expectations, we were still confident that we've maintained our contingency, and we're well-positioned to stay on budget for the project. The building committee understands wholeheartedly the importance of staying on budget for this project. So after the funding was approved, at last January, the architect provided the detailed, construction detailed drawings. We went out for a contractor. We went through the approval process with town plan and zoning and with conservation, and that we were successful there. We had the contractor awarded in November, the, right at the beginning of November. And then really, for the last two to three months, or two months really, two and a half months, we've been going through the approval process on the permitting side. So we've been working with the building department, the conservation department, the health department. The project was split into three permits. The first would be the demolition of the existing clubhouse. The second would be the construction of the new clubhouse, but the third was the cart barn itself as a separate permit. And the reason we did that was because, that was at the recommendation of the building department, Tom Connolly. It would allow us to prioritize the work on the cart barn, because that also would allow us to better, be better positioned to get a certificate of occupancy for that portion, hopefully this spring, which would allow the golf course to open to the public during construction. And that's one thing that's really important, that the building department has been working closely with Anthony Calabrese and Parks and Rec and the Golf Commission, to try and do as much as we can to minimize the impact on the golf operations. We understand that it is a revenue source for the town, and it's really important that we try and do as much of this work during the off-season as possible. Basically, back up the construction site as much as possible to allow as much parking as we can during the 2020 transition period. Ultimately, when the project's done, we will increase our parking from roughly 160 spots to almost 200, which will be great in the long run, but we will be challenged, or the golf operations will be challenged during 2020. I think we're expecting roughly 100 parking spaces during construction. Now granted, there won't be a facility, so people won't necessarily be staying for lunch after they complete their round, so we're hoping that those peak periods when the morning golfers and the afternoon golfers are overlapping in the parking lot, that overlap will be minimized. So at the end of the day, the, since November, the permit process has taken us a little longer than we anticipated, certainly longer than we had scheduled. But as of before, after this package was prepared, but Friday afternoon, I submitted these to Jennifer Friday morning, Friday afternoon, we did have two of the three permits in hand and the, for the cart barn and the demolition. The third permit for the construction of the clubhouse, all Ts have been crossed and Is are dotted, but ultimately, typically, that permit would not be issued until the demo was completed. So we feel confident that we've positioned ourselves now where we pretty much have a clear path. So the next steps really are to get into and out of the ground. And what I mean by that is the foundations have to be dug, and the foundations have to be poured, and the footing's in place. We'll know a lot more about where the project stands and the health of our contingency once we're able to get out of the ground, because we've done a lot of test pit testing to determine whether there's ledge or other rock to worry about, but test pits can only get you so far, and ultimately, when you dig six feet to the right or left, you might hit something else. It is Connecticut. So at the end of the day, I believe that we're still on track to stay on budget. We may be, we're roughly eight weeks behind on the cart barn, but we are probably six weeks away from getting the foundation done, or in terms of timeline of the, in comparison to the original schedule. But we do expect to be able to make up time as the construction goes forward, that the contractors already started work on the parking lot and drainage and things like that. So at this point, I think we're probably four weeks behind overall, with the hope of even making that up. The original completion date was September, Labor Day, so we may be looking at something closer to October 1st, early October.
So two questions.
Yeah.
What's going on there right now?
So as of Friday, I was not up there today, but as of Friday, the cart barn, the existing cart barn, and I'll put up a slide that will make sense. So the existing cart barn is this rectangle right here, and this square is an addition that's going on to being added to the cart barn. So as of Friday, the cart barn, the existing cart barn has been completely taken down to the foundation and the slab. Sil plates were being put in place, and the next step would be to just frame that out. For the addition, the foundation has been excavated, about 80% excavated, and once the engineering group signs off on the depth and making sure it all meets code, they'll have that, all the forms in place. They should be pouring that concrete within the next week. So we're pretty close to getting that done. Once that's done, we'll be able to frame this all out, and again, try and prioritize this work so that it's completed for the spring. One, so that we can have our carts available for use during this season, but also, this section of the expanded expansion is going to ultimately, end-use be for bag storage, unisex bag storage available for men and women. But temporarily, during the rest of 2020, before this is configured to store bags, it will be used as a temporary pro shop. If we're able to do that, we can save on the temporary trailers that would otherwise need to be brought in, so we could have a pro shop and golf operations work during 2020. So that's why it's really important, we've been trying to prioritize this, so we both get the carts out to rent and generate the revenue, but have a place for the golf operations to take in greens fees and things like that without having to have the expense of a trailer.
How often do you visit the site?
So we have owner's rep collars, they are there at least three times a week. As the chairman of the building committee, I live about maybe a mile from the project, so I am making sure that I am getting there two to three times a week.
So just to ask, like, for example, how many workers are on site at any given day?
Yeah, so Werner Construction is our general contractor. They have a tremendous amount of subcontractors on site. On any given day, it's going to be a different crew. DeGrasso, I believe, is doing a lot of the excavation work as a subcontractor, but we also have a whole abatement team that's there. I talked about the cart barn piece, but the clubhouse demolition has also been working in parallel, and that's a different crew, because they are working on the abatement. There's a lot of, there were PCBs and asbestos to deal with. There was actually, I believe, asbestos in between the brick exterior and the cinder block construction. So the exterior had to come down, the brick first, almost on a piece-by-piece basis, very manual. So all the caulking around the windows, I believe, had PCBs, so all of that had to be taken out by hand and following all the regulations and such. So all of that's been handled properly, and I think we're probably about a week to 10 days, maybe less than 10 days, but probably at least a week away from completing all the abatement, and then the building should come down relatively quickly. It'll probably take two days to come down.
So Anthony gave an update about this during budget meetings, me and my staff. So explain to me, or help me understand why the kitchen material infrastructure for someone to come in, because we're going to have a banquet space there.
Yeah.
Which I think is vitally important, because it's, it could be generating income for the town.
Sure.
Actually, would like to see it be a little bit bigger, because a lot of people are asking for banquet space. But why were, why was all the mechanicals removed from the, from the project? Because obviously, this is going to make it really difficult for the town to be able to lease up.
Yeah.
You know, to a restaurateur who's going to then have to now make an investment, probably upwards of $200,000.
Right.
Which means they're not going to want to pay us a whole lot of rent, because now they have to make an investment.
Sure.
For stoves, refrigerators, and all of these things to run something, restaurant.
Yeah.
So what happened?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Our original plan did call for a fully fitted-out kitchen, and certainly, a big part of the design, and let me pull up the floor plan, because this is relevant. A big part, a big part of the design was to significantly increase the square footage in the kitchen itself. Front door to the clubhouse is here, which goes into the dining room. The golf operations, so pro shop and locker rooms are on this wing, but really, it's the kitchen in this front corner bar area over here, which was important. We've got a hallway that goes here, allows us to have an event, but still available to the public and vice versa, depending on the size. This square footage for the kitchen is significantly larger than what currently exists, and the original plan was to have this fully fitted, outfitted with all of the kitchen equipment. When the bids came in, and we were $400,000 over our original budget, and looking for ways to close that gap, I mentioned that the general contractor did make some concessions, but we also did have to make some changes. One of the changes that we did make was to, within consultation with Parks and Rec, discussed the kitchen equipment. There was roughly about $150,000 worth of kitchen equipment in the kitchen, and we asked the question whether we would, whether we should or would consider moving forward without fitting that out. Now, all of the, all of the mechanicals work, so all the gas lines and everything will be there, but it's just a question of whether you want a six-burner stove or an eight-burner stove, or whether you want a pizza oven or not. Those are, one of the topics that was discussed with Anthony is that, depending on which bidder is bidding, they may not want the configuration that we, that we would have a kitchen consultant come up with. Certainly, someone like a Vosses in Bridgeport may want a pizza oven, somebody else may not. So the other consideration was, if we buy kitchen equipment, we're buying new kitchen equipment at a certain level of state pricing, but oftentimes, my understanding and what was explained to the building committee, is that oftentimes, restaurants will bring in salvaged kitchen equipment from a restaurant that's gone out of business, and they can bring it in at pennies on the dollar from what we would supply on a brand-new basis. So I do recognize that we may not be able to garner the same level of rent had we provided a fully stocked kitchen, but that was certainly discussed and discussed with DPW and discussed with Parks and Rec as part of the consideration. So at the end of the day, however, because all of the gas lines and such will be fitted out, the plumbing will be fitted out, we're certainly open to using any contingency that's available at the end. If, once we get out of the ground, as I mentioned, when we know that we don't have to worry about hitting rock or otherwise, and we know that we've got of the 500,000, some number available, we're certainly open to making sure that that money is used in the appropriate way, and if that means fitting out the kitchen with equipment based on a concessionaire's request, or in concert with Parks and Rec, we'd absolutely do that.
Hello. I just want to start by saying thank you, because I know how hard you've worked over the years. You are very passionate about this project, and I know how personally you take it, and so for that, we should all be grateful.
Thank you.
So thank you for all the hard work and for the continued hard work I know you'll have to do. When I was serving on the RTM, there was a lot of lively, thoughtful, long discussion about this project, which ultimately I supported, and I'm happy to do so. I just want to reiterate the importance of what you already said, the importance of staying on budget.
Yeah.
Because it was a difficult decision for some people to ultimately arrive at. Couple of questions.
Yep.
And more, just to point something out, the $100,000 that is now year 10 of the golf grant to improve the course, this is not, I just want to hear it from you, that this will not impact any of the work and renovations that they're doing on the golf course itself, and?
Correct, yeah. One of the things that we've strived very, it's been straightforward from the beginning, that whatever we do, whatever our plan was, we needed to do, move forward in this project in a manner that would not impact the golf course, or at least minimally impact it, not just the golf course, but the golf operations. So all of the golf course footprint and property itself will be unaffected, and so if someone comes to play Smith Richardson, they will get exactly the same experience that they otherwise got, with the exception of the challenge of parking during this transition period. Foot traffic and pedestrian traffic will be routed around the construction, and that will make for a slightly different path, but other than that, it will not impact the operations.
So parking is a great segue to my next question comment. The $280,000 that you're hoping will get approved.
Yeah.
For the paving, can you talk about the implication of it not being passed or earmarked specifically for this?
Yeah, great question, because that's actually a question that I posed to this board when the motion was made to remove the 280,000. I actually grabbed the minutes from that meeting and included them in my presentation today, so there are three bullet points as excerpts from those minutes. And one of the things that I asked at the time was, did the project need to worry about whether this $280,000 was at risk for approval? And I don't know if Mr. Timinaak is still in the room, he was here earlier, but he was on the board at the time. And what was made clear in response to that question was that, at the end of the day, the project will have a parking lot. I don't know what the number is in terms of what the typical DPW line item is for paving, let's round numbers, let's assume it's 3 million. If the 2.8, or 280,000 is not added to that, it may mean that DPW is going to have to make some tougher choices in terms of what streets are completed in the fiscal year. But I was, I was assured by the board that our parking lot wouldn't be in jeopardy. It may make DPW's job a little bit difficult, and that's why I've offered my time to Brian Carey as the acting DPW director, to sit side-by-side with him during the budget approval process and make sure that I'm, as we've had elections and turnover on all three boards, I want to make sure that that point is, people are reminded of the decisions that were made and hoping that somebody else is not short-changed based on the decision that was made a year ago.
And have you? And have you spoken, I know you spoke to the acting, when Mr. Carey was serving as the acting, have you spoken to the current head of DPW to talk about?
I have not.
Okay.
No, I have not, but certainly that's something.
I encourage you to do so, to make sure that everyone is on the same page.
Yeah.
Let me just refer to my notes, I have two more questions. In terms of the permitting process, do you want, was that a holdup from your end, or was it just...
No, we, we put the plans in front of the building department in July, before we even went out to a bid for the general contractors. Typically, that was, that, that was atypical in terms of process, but we were trying to get in front of it and give, give the department as much time as possible, understanding that they are busy, and I, and hopefully, short-circuiting, short-circuiting the process once a general contractor was selected. Because our bids all came in over budget, we were about two weeks behind in terms of actually making the award for the contractor, so that was two weeks of it. And then frankly, the rest of it has been a little bit of what you talked about, Brenda, in terms of the process, going from conservation to building to health and such, and we've had our general contractor or our owner's rep in this building almost daily, trying to walk this process around, and no, no finger pointing, it's just been, it's a bureaucratic process, so...
Which is a great, and too, when we hear at the next board of selectmen meeting, and I'm sure the first selectwoman can speak to this, it just highlights the importance of having a process that is current and efficient.
Yes, I was excited to hear that.
Not that streamlined.
I was excited to hear you talk about that earlier, because I felt like we've lived that pain, and as a, as a...
Some people in town have lived that pain.
And as a town project, I know it's really important that all Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, and, and nobody was looking for any treatment different than the normal process, but yet we ran into just a slower process than we expected.
And so I bring that up to highlight that very point, because now, is it eight weeks plus six weeks plus four weeks?
No, we're hoping to make up time.
Okay.
Yeah. It's only eight weeks behind on the cart barn, because we were expecting or hoping to get that done by March, mid-March, and we're, we can only make up so much time between now and then. We still need to get a little bit lucky with the weather. We've had a very mild winter so far, absent the last few days, but with a little bit of luck, we'll be able to make up time between now and then, but certainly over the course of the next eight months or so, we'll be able to make up more time.
Okay, and yet, even with all of that, you're still confident in your ability to stay on budget?
Well, certainly, time adds cost. Even if there's no cost overrun, time does add cost, so we are, if we are not able to make up time, we're going to burn money with the contractor, that's going to be roughly $50,000 a month, and it's, and we're probably going to run over with our owner's rep and other professional fees. So, it's unfortunate, because those aren't even hard assets that the town can retain. So, we're really motivated, we're meeting two to three times a month just to keep this project, project on, on schedule, or at least as, as close to it as we can. But at the end of the day, we're, we're really hoping to get out of the ground as quickly as possible, and then we'll really be able to know how much of that contingency we've spent, and whether we can use that to absorb these time delays.
And your personal attachment, passion, and showing up on the site bodes well, and will, I think, help keep things moving along.
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a weekly update meeting on-site with the contractor and the owner's rep and, and the architect. I attend those, and in addition to that, making time to just pop in when I can.
So, just one question, I mean, obviously, I wasn't involved in this process throughout, as Nancy was as an RTM member.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me why the cost was so high, though? Is it because it's a municipal project? Because, I mean, you see other golf courses and clubhouses, I mean, they're like gorgeous, and it's for such less than this.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering, is it because we have to follow some certain rules or municipal guidelines, labor laws, prevailing wage?
Prevailing wage is certainly a factor. Yes, that's definitely a factor. The other part of it is, you know, we can't necessarily know exactly what went into every bidder's bid, but my understanding is that the owner's rep and our architect have relationships with some of the other parties, and whether it was some of the contractors who actually bid, others who chose not to, we did solicit some feedback, and, and one of the challenges that we've realized was, because we're trying to keep the golf course open, it's an extremely tight project to actually, for the work zone, and it's presented challenges in itself that were not priced into the original estimates. Now, we went through the estimate process, we hired two different estimators, or certainly a third-party estimator in addition to the estimator with the architect, at three different stages. So, we had six rounds of estimates that were then reconciled with each other, and compared to other costs and such, we never anticipated that the cost would be as high as they were. And as, as an appendix, I included a summary of all the qualified bids, and...
Right, I saw.
They were quite high.
I would, I would also add that this is a project that was like 10 years in the making, and it wouldn't have cost so much had the decision been made years before to start it, and I think it's another justification for making some decisions sometimes that feel expensive in the moment, but...
Yeah, there were, and that was actually an analysis that we provided to the Board of Finance back in the approval process, probably 14 months ago, when we talked about, in 2006, the estimate was $3.5 million, and now we're at 7. And, and it was apples to oranges, it's not just inflation, but it's also, that was the construction cost, now we're at, you know, 5.6 on the construction cost.
Right, just curious, because I'm talking about things that were built recently, that wasn't, it's not a time thing, and I'm just wondering if it was because it's municipal and the prevailing wage, what is driving the cost? Because it's, it is high comparatively to, to similar golf courses.
I do know that we, there is one...
That were built recently.
There is one individual who's a town resident, who is a local business owner, and is in the trade, not to do the GC work, but just a subcontractor trade.
Right.
And he indicated to me that he was not even going to bid on the project because the, the prevailing wage element of the project, which just didn't make it worth his time.
Yeah.
So, that is a factor.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Do you have any more?
No.
Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions, or any information they'd like to know more about this project? No? Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate you taking the time, and I appreciate you, your service on the building committee. I know it's a lot of work to, to volunteer your time in that way.
No worries, I, I am passionate about it, and I am dedicated to making sure that we stay on...
And maybe we can keep that contingency for the paving and the restaurant equipment.
That would be great.
What do you think about that? That'd be great.
I certainly, as soon as we get out of the ground, I'm happy to come back with an update for you, so that you have a better sense, and I'll keep you updated throughout the whole process.
Very good, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get that back on. Okay. Where are we? Next up is item 11, purchasing. Sitting back there, are you awake? Sorry about this, this is going very long, isn't it? Thanks Gerald. Gerald hasn't been feeling well, he's back, he's back to work, so...
Good evening, I'm Gerald Foley.
So, just let me, I'm sorry Gerald, let me just say, to hear, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Diversity Construction Group LLC for alter, alterations and upgrades at Rogers Sherman Elementary School, and the amount not to exceed $2,237,237,400. Funding for this contract is available in account 2503030-5300. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move, motion to approve.
I will second. You're up Gerald.
The project that you have before you, I have the chairman of the building committee here, if you have any questions for...
Hello.
So, this particular project is phase three for the Rogers Sherman Elementary School. We're going to be doing fire protection upgrades, some plumbing upgrades, mechanical upgrades.
Okay.
We went out to bid, the prefix is, is we'd like to get a warrant in place, or a contract in place, so that we can actually do the work over this coming summer. Went out to bid about two months ago, and our, our goal is, is to start in the month of March, to do, probably do off-hour work, and then the bulk of the work will be done over the, the three months in the summer.
Okay, would you like to come up and speak a little bit about it?
Sure.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record?
Eric Lang, 365 South Benson Road.
Thanks Eric.
Chair of the building committee for the renovations at Rogers Sherman School.
Okay.
We have been working on this project, I guess, for the last year and a half. We did some work last summer on parking lot upgrades, accommodated additional busing, some electrical work to help facilitate the upcoming work that we're going to be doing this summer. The main scope being air conditioning throughout the school, not only in the classrooms, but also in the APR, gym administration offices, basically, throughout the entire building. So, the, and just taking a step back, the main scope of the work is really infrastructure-related. So, it's air conditioning, it's a new sprinkler system, it's at, well, it's an, it's a sprinkler system throughout the school, because their, the school doesn't currently have one, as well as some ancillary electrical upgrades, fire alarm upgrades, and so on and so forth. So, we're looking to get the contractor up and running now, so that he can start procuring long lead-time items, like, you know, the air conditioning equipment, and start the work ahead of the summer on, as Gerald mentioned, on an after-hour basis, just to make sure, or try to help ensure that all the work is completed for the first day of school.
Do you have any questions, Nancy?
I do, and mostly just for edification, so all the proper procedures were followed, insurance and bonds, and anything else that needed to happen to go into this to make it an appropriate contract? Ran through the various departments, and, okay, just wanted to make sure that all the, the Is are dotted, et cetera.
Anything you want us to know, you think we should know?
Um, no, I mean, that's about it. I think once the contractor gets up and running, I'm, again, happy to come back and report on progress.
Okay.
You know, this project, Sherman School in particular, is challenged because it is in the flood zone, so we do have a very strict FEMA cap, and we are currently on budget with a, a bit of a contingency, not quite $500,000, but enough that we think we should be well below that FEMA cap and be able to execute everything we're looking to execute.
I'm well aware, I was chairman of the facilities committee of the Board of Education, so I'm well aware of all the schools' challenges, especially Sherman's.
And...
Popular school.
It is. It's a great school.
It is. Popularized, there's a lot of parents that live in that area.
That's right.
And again, for a point of clarification, what we're voting on today to approve is just entering this specific contract with the people specifically doing the work. It's not about approving the work itself, like, that has already been passed through the proper procedure, but what this is, is for this particular company to go ahead.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just sort of stating...
We're trying to follow more different, like, sort of, you know.
Stating it for the obvious.
For the record.
For the record, so that people who have questions, so this is not about the work and what it is, although it's good to know, that's not what we're approving today, but instead, the company...
For the contract.
Correct.
The contract.
So I can sign it.
Do you have mine?
I will.
Great.
Anymore? Is there any questions or comments from the public? All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, do we have, we already have the motion, so are we ready to come back, and... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 12, Gerald, you're back up. To hear, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contra, contract with Badge Quest Incorporated for promotional testing services for the police department, for the ranks of detective, sergeant, lieutenant, and in the amount not to exceed $40,200. Funding for this contract is available in account 01004030-53200. May I have a motion to approve?
I will move to approve.
I will second. You're up Gerald.
So, the authorization, request authorization for you is to enter into the contract with Badge Quest. To facilitate this process, we went out for an RFP, we solicited proposals from firms, from the firms that submitted, the purchasing departments, and, and the purchasing authorities' recommendation to go with Badge Quest. I have members from the police department, I have the chief, and Chief Liddy, and Assistant Chief...
Don Smith.
Don Smith, there you are. We have questions. But this firm that we're recommending was the most qualified of the firms that submitted. And what we have is, is basically, there's three ranks, you have, you have a detective, sergeant, and lieutenant, and then this company would work with the, the police department to develop the test, and then actually do the, the whole testing process.
So, again, can you clarify that this contract is not about approving what the work is, but just that it's, it's for the company itself?
Correct.
That's doing the work, so that that process has already happened?
Correct.
And maybe the police chief can, can just talk for 30 seconds, if, about what that work is that we're assigning for the people that don't know?
You've heard many exciting projects tonight, this isn't one of them.
Really, chief?
Come on.
But, yeah, we're excited about this bid award. The company will now come in and do a job task analysis, something that hasn't been done in quite a while, and we all know that our jobs change over time and morph. Once they've sat down with our union and our leadership, they'll develop a written test, followed by a, an assessment center test, they'll meet with the candidates, and then ultimately produce a competitive examination. We only have an opening right now for a detective, so it's not everything that you see in that resolution, but allowing us a two-year contract would allow us simply to run a test should future openings come up.
Thank you. I think it's great to have metrics and quantifiable metrics for the department to be able to use, so I think it's great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, come back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sorry guys to make you wait so long.
Thank you.
Get some rest Gerald. Feel better. Last item, I think, yes. To consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $857.56. May I have a motion?
And I will move to, I'll move to consider an act upon the refunds, and to add that I've looked at the backup material, and the amount of $857.56 is for all, for the record.
I second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. To hear, number 15, to hear and consider an act upon any other business which shall properly come before this meeting. Is there any other business? All right. I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that one.
High five?
Yeah, nice.
Well done.